So it's almost six o'clock. I would like to open regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September first, twenty twenty. Due to ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic emergency, we have to continue handle our city council meeting much different than we usually do. For the safety of our staff and the safety of public. Now I'm going to ask our new city manager, Mr. Hines, to give us a brief explanation to the public regarding this. Mr. Hines?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's a pleasure to be here with everyone. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with the state and county stay-at-home orders, as allowed by the governor's executive order N twenty-nine, N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, which allows for the deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held by teleconference or video conference until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit public or may submit written public comments via email to pubcom at cityofgalt.org, and that's P U B C O M at cityofgalt.org, prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the council, city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda items, subject to the customary five-minute time limit. We will try to check the email for additional public comments during the meeting if feasible. We are also using a new webinar format that allows the public to provide live public comment using Zoom webinar feature. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should be able to use the raise their hand feature in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak. And should we do so when the mayor announces the time for the general public comment? We request, as we do at a typical in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their names and address when they are called on to speak and their line is, will then be unmuted. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their minds or do not want to speak. If you do not see these features in the Zoom module, you are using, you are using a software that is not up to date because of, or because of another technical issue on the user's end. There will be an opportunity after the staff report for the public to provide public comment on the special meeting, special meeting budget or the special meeting agenda item tonight. Again, attendees via the Zoom webinar will need to raise their hand.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Agenda item A, call the meeting in order. Gina may have a roll call today.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Campion?
Here.
Councilmember Lamson?
Here.
Mayor Sandu?
Here.
Please rise for the silent prayer and the flag salute. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gina, may, can you read a replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, September fourth at nine AM and Saturday, September fifth at nine AM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Next agenda item B, cancel any agenda approval, addition or deletion. Next agenda item is presentation. Number one subject, keep California safe. Chief Sackman?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, and welcome to our new city manager, Lorenzo Hines. So we have a short, very, very short PowerPoint. When I say short, it's really just two slides, but we're going to cover a few points here, and then at the end, I'll be happy to answer any questions. So Keep the California Safe Act, that is Proposition twenty, which is on this year's ballot. In March of two thousand eighteen, council approved a resolution in support of this initiative. Unfortunately.
Mr. Sackman, we lose to?
Election cycle. Following that, and earlier this year, Vice Mayor Lozano and I attended a presentation by the League of Cities and the California Police Chiefs Association to discuss the initiative, and after that, following that, that, looks like there's the presentation. Go ahead and get started. So over the last several legislative sessions and election cycles, the California Police Chiefs Association and the law enforcement partners have tried to integrate a series of major reforms to the criminal justice system. However, the cumulative effects has created impacts to our community that cannot be ignored. It is important to note that addressing these consequences are not proposing to do away with all of the recent changes, and in no way are we advocating for a system of mass incarceration. In general, the overall intent of the prior measures have been increased to increase opportunities for rehabilitation while lowering recidivism rate and incarceration rates. We agree, the California consequences that have negatively impacted the public safety in communities throughout California. Changes meant to help, to help keep someone from stealing a magazine out of jail are now allowing individuals to steal up to nine hundred fifty dollars repeatedly from stores and businesses. Reforms intended to lower penalties in personal drug use and theft have diminished the amounts of evidence that law enforcement can collect to help solve cold case murders, rapes and robberies. Modifications to our parole system designed to apply to nonviolent offenders are set to potentially provide early releases for serious domestic abusers. The California Police Chiefs Association have developed an initiative that will help crack down on repeat offenders and protect our most vulnerable victims from dangerous individuals who take advantage of our laws, our businesses and our communities. This initiative expands the list of violent crimes, which early release is not an option. Under current law, rape of an unconscious person, trafficking a child for sex, assault on a police officer, felony domestic violence and other similar crimes are not classified as violent felonies, making criminals convicted of these crimes eligible for early release. The initiative, the initiative also reinstates DNA collection for certain crimes that were reduced to misdemeanors as part of Prop forty-seven. Multiple studies have shown that DNA collection from theft and drug crimes helps solve other crimes, including robbery, rape and murder. And since passage of Prop forty-seven, cold case hits have dropped over two thousand with more than four hundred fifty of these hits connected to violent crimes. Further, the initiative revises the theft threshold by adding a felony for serial theft when a person is caught for the third time stealing a value of two hundred fifty dollars. Prop forty-seven changed the dollar threshold for thefts to be considered for a felony from four hundred fifty to nine hundred fifty dollars. As a result, there has been an explosion of serial thefts and the inability for law enforcement to prosecute these crimes effectively. Theft has increased by twelve to twenty-five percent, depending upon where you are in the state, with the loss in the billions of dollars census laws passed. And finally, the initiative requires the Board of Parole Hearings to consider an inmate's entire criminal history when deciding parole, not just the most recent committed offense. It requires a mandatory hearing to determine whether parole should be revoked for any parolee who violates the terms of his parole on his third time. AB one oh nine, based on parole, bases parole solely on offenders' offense, resulting in the release of an inmate with serious or violent criminal histories. Moreover, parolees who repeatedly violate the terms of their parole currently face few consequences and allow them to remain on the streets. That really just concludes my overall presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that any council members might have.
Thank you, Chief Sackman. The only, my, now the question, yes, what's the AB one oh nine? Can you might be a little better explaining that?
Yeah, so AB one oh nine was enacted in two thousand eleven, and that was the first first attempt to the state of California for prison reform. And what that did is that changed a number of things in the system we, that we already discussed about the parole, and it also changed what was classified as a nonviolent felony. If you're not committed, if you're not convicted of a nonviolent felony, that enables you to either be held in a county jail or your time in prison can be reduced, and you're eligible for parole earlier. The list of nonviolent felonies is, is, is scary at best. I can, I can tell you what those, those are if you'd like, but I have a list of them here, but it, it will, it will shock the conscience of people if they actually knew exactly what was now classified as a nonviolent felony.
Thank you. Any other, Vice Mayor Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to point out a couple of things just real quick. I know we spoke about this in the spring, and I made some of the same comments then, but, but Chief Sackman helped me here if I get stuck. You know, we talk about the violent felonies and things, and, you know, the stuff that I believe also does nothing but harm the safety of our community. And we do definitely need to do something different moving forward. And so, you know, just the collection of DNA, the collection of, you know, I mean, what used to be felony narcotics possession violation. We get somebody put in jail and you get their fingerprints and, and all that stuff for future crimes. Some, that stuff isn't happening anymore. The other piece of this, though, is, is that we, we didn't talk, we, people don't talk about this, and, and when you talk about petty theft and theft from business and things like that, you know, that impacts our economy and our, our businesses. When Chief Sackman and I went to this presentation downtown in the spring, businesses are being slammed by this. There, there is no teeth in, in petty theft anymore. And, you know, I, I remember back in the day when you did time for any kind of theft crime in any kind of institution. So let's say you did a burglary and you did thirty days in county jail. The next time you did a petty theft, it was, it was a felony and not so much anymore. And, and so I, I think it's important also that the community recognize that this is affecting our pocketbooks as citizens in the, in the respect of businesses being, you know, ripped off right in front of their faces, and there's, there's nothing that can, can be done in the current criminal justice system. So we definitely need this reform. I would support, you know, I, I, I want to implore everyone to support this moving forward because, you know, there, there's going to be a lot, there's a lot of consequences out there that people haven't really talked about, and, and I agree with Chief Sackman. I mean, the list of nonviolent felonies anymore will make your skin crawl. I don't know if my colleagues remember that from a few months ago, but during that presentation, but it's, it's sad. And so there's really two pieces to it, at least from my perspective. One is the straight public safety perspective of our community, and then the other really the effects of our businesses and, and, and the loss of business and increase in cost. So that's all I have. I thank you, Chief Sackman, for the presentation, and we will do leak in our end to, to ensure that we continue to keep our communities safe with this legislation.
So you know, a couple of comments on what Vice Mayor Lozano just said. So there is one major retailer in the state of California, and just in the state of California has lost an additional fourteen million dollars in one year from the additional theft, specifically as a result of Prop forty-seven. And then the second thing that I think is really important and probably a little frustrating for the community and a little bit frustrating for the police department is that we hear it all the time. I called in on, and then fill in the blank, the, this person is suspicious, and I called it in, and then later on I saw the same person walking on the street. So what's really frustrating on, on, not on the larger scale, but on the individual scale is when you, before Prop forty-seven, if we were to arrest someone who was in possession of methamphetamine, as an example, and that person had methamphetamine on their, in their person, the officer found it on them, they would be arrested for a felony, and they would be booked in the county jail, and they would be, they would, let's say it was on a Friday night, and they would see a judge on Monday. That would give them a couple of days to sober up from the effects of the illegal drugs that are in their system. And then the judge, when they see them, they have the opportunity to offer them drug rehabilitation or drug court. Now, under Prop forty-seven, same scenario. The police officer stops the person, they have methamphetamine in their pocket. We, we take the methamphetamine and we book it in to evidence. However, they get it, the, the person that is in possession of it gets a ticket and they're sent on their way. So when the citizens say, I just saw, I just called them, and they just stopped them, they did nothing and let them go, that, well, that's not the truth. The truth is, is that we did something, we did what was within the confines of the law. So that is a challenge, and then, you know, I would, I would be remiss if I didn't say that with all of these, the passage of all these laws, the culmination of those three laws that, or reforms that went into place, there are a lot of people that would normally be incarcerated, whether they would be in county jail or in prison, and they're back out on our streets. And so there's, hopefully there's some reform involved with these folks after they get arrested. But, you know, sometimes there's not, and those folks are out on the street. And so there's more and more contacts with law enforcement. Those folks have more contact with law enforcement, and so there's additional arrests, different, additional confrontations, additional people that don't want to go back into the jail that, that lead to some of the violent confrontations and stuff that are happening throughout our nation, but specifically.
Thank you. Any other council member want to make any comment?
Yes, I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay. I'd like to echo a lot of what Councilmember Lozano said in, in terms of the, the theft, you know, particularly from retailers. I, I know personally several managers for large retail stores, and it is to the point now, and this is due to liability issues. They don't even confront these people. They let them take whatever they want off the shelf and walk straight out the front door, which as a retailer, and this is, you know, large corporations, I don't care. It, it's still frustrating to them, but as, as has been pointed out, you and I and the general public, the consumer, end up paying for that because it is is a lost item, and it just, it is not right. And, and I, I thought hopefully, you know, this type of legislation would correct those ills. And so I, I personally support this completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member?
Just want to say thank you, Chief, for bringing that to us, and you brought it to our attention before, and it's very disheartening, and hopefully we can get some action and get this taken care of.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment too. I mean, there's nothing really to add in addition to what Vice Mayor Lozano and, and Councilman Campion mentioned. But it is, it is frustrating to see legislation passed, and then, and then it always seems like that they have to come back with something to try to backpedal some of that. And this is an example of that, we did something, oh, wait, we maybe we didn't think this through well enough, but the repercussions would be, so now we have to pass additional legislation to now. And it's just, it's frustrating. It's like they just don't see it from the perspective of law enforcement or, or like Mr. Campion said, from business owners. So anyways, yeah, I very much support this as well. I, I think hopefully this will pass.
And lastly, I would like also to support this Proposition twenty. As you know, they every day, any business open for a public, they do have a problem. And they really know what's a problem is. The other side, the law enforcement, the normal person is, is not going to understand what's the big problem with the Proposition forty-seven. You know, every small business, large business, they open for the public, and it's very, it's very hard if the customer are going to, you know, pick up something, and it's very hard to enforce. And I thank you for the chief, and I personally support this, Proposition twenty.
And lastly, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if I, I'd like to close by saying this. There's a level of frustration in law enforcement because you keep seeing the same people over and over and over again. What I will say about this department and the men and women that work in this department, what, there is the no dip, no slowdown in the level of proactivity that this department continues to have year after year despite all of these things. And I, and I know from other departments that officers have decided that, you know, that, well, I don't want to be as proactive because I'm just going to chase the same guy. We are very fortunate in this city to have such dedicated men and women continuing to do what they do and not slowing down in any way, regardless of what the voters vote in, because Prop forty, forty-seven and fifty-seven were voter initiatives, and AB one oh nine was, was legislature. They, they, they still don't stop. They still continue to work hard. So very, very proud of the men and women in this department.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody, any other comment? If he's not, then I'm going to move to the next. Did I heard anybody want to make any comment? All right, I'm going to move the next agenda item D, public comment.
Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom at cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS colon forward, forward slash, forward slash, US zero two web dot zoom dot US forward slash J forward slash eight six one zero one two nine four one eight four. Webinar ID eight six one zero one two nine four one eight four. And I do have one public comment on a non-agenda item. This is for Rand, from Randy at Galt Fitness Pro. I am proud of our local Galt Police Department. Many of you know Fitness Pro was attacked by rioters. Our police were there, brave and on the spot. I am honored to say that Mr. Lorenzo Hines Jr., our offices, our officers are amazing. Thank you for becoming our new city manager, Mr. Hines. Galt USA members appreciate it. And that's it for non-agenda items.
And I have a raised hand, so let me check and see if it's on a non-agenda item. Jean Davenport?
Good evening. I wanted to just make a comment. I wanted to thank Paige for her vote at the last meeting on the Corillian Project. It took guts to stand up for the people that spoke. There is no silent majority on this issue. I think the people in this town spoke loudly and clearly, and I wanted to thank Paige for having the courage to stand up and, and, and take a breath and maybe take a step back and look at this as we go forward. The things that are happening in Galt right now is, is, is a lot of home, a lot of home building, and a lot of the developers come in with their agenda, and, and they really don't take time to look at what we do as a city. I know my, my daughter and my son-in-law belong to a bike club, and they're not in favor of that, of that thing going forward. And I have two grandkids who are going to grow up in the city, and I think safety should be first, and knocking that down to two lanes is not, is not smart. So Paige, I just want to say thank you personally. I appreciate it very much, and I hope you all take this into consideration when the vote comes back in, in October or November. But I think that needs, if you do consider anything, take it to the four lane. You can still keep it at four lanes with option B. So just thank you, Paige. I appreciate it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Jean.
Anybody else? Any comment? If he's not, then I'm going to move along to the next agenda item E, report by city council member, original board, commission and committees. Vice Mayor Lozano?
Yeah, I'll be brief. We had a CCOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting on Monday, and we talked about several things, but we, most importantly, I think, was the extending, I'm sorry, the mega-region concept of working together with the, the different, the CCOGs of the different regions. And, and the big thing that came out of that was that their last meeting, they agreed to look for an MOU to work together, kind of formalize that process. And then also, they put in a joint application for state transportation funds. They believe that, the group believes that that will empower the, the group as a whole and, and put them higher on the list, showing that the three regions are working together. So that was the big thing. And we will, we have our next CCOG meeting on the seventeenth, and I'll report back at the following council meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion?
No, the, the last meeting of the South County HCP was canceled, so I have to finger report.
Councilmember Lamson?
Yes, I do. Thank you. We had our air quality board meeting, and we were discussing the climate action plan and things like that. And also, since we went into quarantine back in April, there's been a seventeen percent decrease in vehicle emission pollution, which on one thing is superior and excellent. And as people and companies decide that they can work from home and keep the air pollution down, it's a two-edged sword because that means people aren't coming into work, and the restaurants are failing and going out of business, and that is a whole tax base that is disappearing. So it's, even though we're getting less air pollution, there's, there's two sides to it. There's going to be some financial repercussions to that, as we all know. And then had the CSD with the, the two-by-two mini- And then had the CSD with the, the two by two meeting with the CSDs in the city. And have a, had a very informative meeting with Josh Green, the general manager. The, I asked the chief if our CSD fire inspections have been caught up because we had some issues with those a few years back. And the fire inspections have been caught up since 2018 and they continue to remain caught up. So that's really good news. Construction of, not engine, what do you call it? House seventy seven continues. And of course, the costs have gone up dramatically since they approved that and they hope to put it out to bid in October to start construction in 2021. And it should be completed in eight to nine months. And that, even though that won't be in Galt, it will be a resource that's closer to the city of Galt when they're, when they come down to cover us. The general report, the fire department in the nation is trying to figure, they were the first fire department in the nation. The R CSD to figure out a way to sterilize their N ninety five max masks in case there was a shortage. Because if you remember at the beginning of COVID, there was a shortage and they are to be congratulated on that. So they take COVID testing to people's homes and assisted living facilities. So people can avoid coming out into the community to get tested. They've had a twenty thousand increase of call volume in the last few years. Seventy-five percent of their call volume is EMS. And they have, with the cardiac recovery, the national cardiac recovery rate, when you get called for someone with a heart attack, is twenty-five percent. So if you call nine one one when someone's having a cardiac event, the recovery rate or the, the rate of liv- living is twenty-five percent. The rate of survival for our CSD department and the rate of recovery for cardiac events is fifty-one percent. That is thirty percent higher than the fire departments in Sacramento and Stockton. So they are to be congratulated and we have a superior service with them here in Galt. They're looking for some revenue enhancement opportunities like all of us. They, they want to add resources without increasing fees because they also run the parks and rec, property tax, sales tax and other user fees. So the COVID, the COVID shutdowns have had some direct effect on their revenues. So they're looking for a sustainable revenue that isn't based solely on property tax. And they're willing to work with the city of Galt, the City of Galt Grove to help solve these revenue sources. And the emergency operation plan want to support our EOP and extended invitation to support these efforts. And we'd like to see closer cooperation on that to achieve training and work together. We could share training resources and things with both City of Galt Grove and Galt. And the climate action plan, sorry for this is so long, ninety percent through, they just completed community outreach. And they don't have a land use restriction that the city has. So they calculate a greenhouse gas emissions and they are compliant with all state requirements. So it'd been, I don't know Kurt, it'd been what, about a year since we've had that meeting with them. So we had a lot to go over. And the youth commission did not meet last night because it wasn't September. And but we are, and we're not meeting next week, but we'll meet after Labor Day and I'll let you guys know what goes on with them. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, we had a meeting last Thursday of the Sacramento County Library Authority. And we went over some closed session items. And there's nothing, nothing major to report. We are down. Deliver, curbside pickup was down for some, some reasons that we had to resolve. But other than that, the virtual checkout and the curbside, which I stated last overall was, is up very high, is down slightly from what I reported on it first, but people are really using the library. And it's kind of a interesting to see how the level of volume that they get during this pandemic. But that's pretty much it. I don't have anything else to report on anything else. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I have nothing to report. I may, we're going to have a Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting next week. So I will report on that in the next meeting. Thank you. Next agenda item is F, Information Consent Calendar. It is recommended that item one through nine be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by council member. Tina, could you read that agenda item F one through nine?
Accept the minutes as submitted, receive and file warrants for the period ending August nineteenth, twenty twenty. Adopt a resolution authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to file an application with the California Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Grants and Local Services to receive funding from the Proposition Sixty per capita Grant Program. Receive the annual report of activities undertaken by the Commission on Aging for fiscal year two thousand nineteen through twenty twenty. Receive the annual report of activities undertaken by the Parks and Recreation Commission for fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty twenty. Accept the donation of the Wally Structure and approve the placement of the structure at Veterans Field. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to Task Order Number Six with Coastland Civil Engineering in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars for on-call construction inspection services. Accept the Treasurers Report as submitted. Accept the proclamation as submitted.
Thank you. Approve the consent calendar as presented. Now I'm entertaining the motion.
I'll make the motion to present, to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion move by Councilmember Lanson, second by Councilmember Campion. Now may have a real call word, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Stan Do.
Aye. Motion pass five to zero. Right. Next agenda item is G, Schedule Matter and Notice of Public Hearing. East Galt Infill Annexation Simmerhorn Ranch Project. Before we proceed this agenda item, I would like to announce I need to recuse myself from participate on this item. Because I own a real estate property, the address one zero six eight four Simmerhorn Road, which is within the proposed annexation area. Based on this, I have a conflict of interest and will recuse myself from the discussion of this item. I will ask Vice Mayor Lozano take over this item. While I would typically leave the room for this virtual meeting, I have been advised by the city attorney to leave the room for turning off microphone, camera and speaker. And I would like to ask Mr. Heinz, well notified me when this item is done, so I can rejoin this meeting. So give me a, like a minute or minute and a half, I will leave this meeting. And Mr. Heinz, just notify on my cellphone when this.
Yes, sir.
All right, members of the council, tonight before you, you do have a important project. This is a, an annexation and a map that is in a gap area. A couple of things about this project. It is an opportunity to link the eastern side of Galt, the extension of Corillian Boulevard, tying in ultimately to a street. Tying into Bosso Road that will ultimately connect into a street as well as it's an opportunity is the potential to generate interest in commercial, highway commercial, some industrial that we see on the east side of Highway ninety-nine. Tonight, Cindy Ganos with Rainy Planning and Management will be giving a PowerPoint presentation, an overview about the project. With us tonight, we also have the project applicant, Price Walker with Elliot Homes, as well as his consultants with Wood Rogers. We have Jeff Carpenter and I believe Sarah will be working from explaining the entitlements as well. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Cindy Ganos with an overview of the project.
Thank you, Craig. Mayor and council members, Cindy Ganos with Rainy Planning and Management. Next slide, please. The proposed East Galt Infill Annexation and Simmerhorn Ranch Project is generally located between Amador Avenue and Bosso Road and Highway ninety-nine and Marengo Road. The applicant is requesting annexation, general plan amendment, pre-zone and vesting tentative subdivision maps. The project consists of two components. The entire crosshatch area contains three hundred and thirty-eight acres and is proposed to be annexed. While the hundred and twenty acre area in red is not only proposed to be annexed, but also for development. Next slide. The applicant originally wanted to just annex the Simmerhorn Ranch portion of the project, but was strongly encouraged by staff to include the entire area in order to fill in this notch area of the city. This, the area has been long planned for annexation to the city and is within the city's sphere of influence and creates a vital connection between the east and west sides of the city, of the city. And can provide direct access to Old Town from the east part of town. Non-participating properties that are part of the annexation area can maintain their existing uses consistent with what's allowed in the county and would not be mandated to connect to city water and sewer unless they want to develop further. Next slide. The non-participating properties are maintaining the existing City of Galt general plan designations and will be pre-zoned consistent with these planned designations. The Simmerhorn Ranch portion of the project is requesting a general plan amendment that shifts the existing general planned land uses on the site. You can see on the left is the existing and on the right is the proposing. Table one in your staff report in the small print at the bottom of this slide shows the acreages and the existing and proposed general plan designations. In general, they are fairly consistent with some reductions in acreage due to the addition of open space designations on the sites for the water quality and stormwater basins. Next slide. The general plan amendment also includes an amendment to the circulation element that reduces the width of A Street, Corillian, Marengo and Simmerhorn to, from four lanes to two lanes for the portion of those roadways within this project site. Next slide. An annexation request requires approval of pre-zoning. As I noted earlier, the non-participating properties are being pre-zoned consistent with the existing general plan designations on the sites to R one A, R one C, R two, LM, MU and HC. The Simmerhorn Ranch portion is requesting a pre-zone to R one C, R two, R three PD, PQ and OS. The densities within the Simmerhorn Ranch project range from four to eight point eight units per acre, which is consistent with the general plan designations for the site. Next slide. The applicant has a presentation for you tonight that will detail all the specifics of the tentative map and the various housing types throughout the project. So I'm just kind of showing you an overview here and noting that the proposal includes four hundred and twenty-nine single-family lots, a park and a school. And again, the, the proposed lots of varying sizes and densities are consistent with the designations that exist in the general plan as they've kind of been reshifted throughout the site. Next slide. As I noted previously, the annexation has been long planned by the city and would provide a vital connection between east and west sides of Galt as well as direct access to Old Town from the east. The residential portion of the development would be a significant driver for development of the adjacent Simmerhorn Commercial Site that contains forty-five acres that we've been working hard to try and attract a user to. The annexation also includes additional property in the non-participating part of the annexation area that has commercial and industrial designations that provide further economic development opportunities within the city. The city currently spends about two hundred thousand dollars servicing this unincorporated, unincorporated area without a means to recover the cost. Annexation would provide additional property tax revenue to offset these costs. In addition, the proposed future residential development would provide approximately nine hundred thousand to one point four million in property tax revenue to cover the provision of public services. We've also added a condition of approval that the Simmerhorn Ranch area annexed to the Public Services CFD. And as other development occurs in the non-participating annexation area, additional revenues would be generated. Next slide. City staff has had ongoing discussions with the applicant for many years about the Simmerhorn Ranch and larger annexation area. In November of twenty eighteen, the city sent a letter to property owners within the annexation area and that letter is included as attachment three to your staff report. The letter outlined the area of annexation and provided answers to frequently asked questions in association with an annexation. On March fourth of twenty nineteen, a public meeting was held where we discussed the annexation as well as the preliminary Simmerhorn Ranch project. Over two hundred notices were sent to properties in the annexation area of five hundred foot radius of the area and to council members and other officials. Over forty-five people were in attendance. The applicant then submitted the official application following that March meeting and we commenced doing multiple studies for the in sequoia document. The sequoia document was then released on May twenty ninth of twenty twenty for a thirty-day public review period. On July twenty-third, twenty twenty, a Zoom public meeting was held before the planning commission to receive feedback from both the commission and the public on the proposed project. Approximately fifteen members of the public commented on that Zoom public meeting. Next slide. Then on August thirteenth, twenty twenty, the planning commission held their public hearing on the project during which seven members of the public spoke. The planning commission recommended by a vote of five to zero to recommend council approve the proposed project. The planning commission, however, added a condition that the developer in the elementary school district enter into an agreement as a means to provide additional funding to the district. Next slide. To conclude, staff and planning commission recommend approval of the project with the actions noted on the slide. And the applicant has a presentation for you this evening and following that, staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Yeah, I had one question. You said the elementary school entered in. What about the high school district? Was there anything with them?
That was not part of the condition of approval, but the high school district has not participated in any of our process.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman, we have an additional presentation.
Yes, we do. Tonight, the applicant will be providing a PowerPoint for you with the detail over the project.
Well, I'll just get started then. Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you for, for having us. This is Price Walker, Vice President of Elliot Homes and our address is three forty Palladio Parkway, Folsom, California. Just want to thank you all for having us tonight and getting this important item to the hearing. We've been working on it for a couple of years with, with staff and actually I'm a little saddened that Chris is not here. We've been working with Chris literally up until this meeting and thankfully I also know Craig and I think we'll, we'll get through this just fine and, and get this project, get this project built. But I, I just wanted to say a couple of things, then I'm going to turn it over to my, my team to give us some, some details of the project. But Elliot Homes has a long history in Galt. We have, well, we've been building houses in Galt for over thirty years. I personally have been coming down for thirty years. I've worked for, for Elliot Homes for thirty years and, and go back to the very beginnings of the Northeast Pacific Plan. And, you know, we, we cherished our time in Galt and we were about to frankly finish up. And we're, we're essentially running out of land and Mr. Arias came to me and said, you know, we have this notch, he called it the notch, this notch area and strongly suggested that we, we take a look at this property and, and we started to. And we were very fortunate to, to be able to acquire a piece of it. And our intention originally was really just to, to, to develop the hundred and twenty acres that we, that we acquired. But with, as Cindy said, a lot of nudging from the city. But with, as Cindy said, a lot of nudging from the city, we, we went ahead with the full 300, I think it's 338 acre notch annexation, which, when you look at a map, which you'll see some coming up, it, it makes a heck of a lot of sense when you just look at it. And so we went ahead and funded and pushed the, the entire annexation. And as Cindy went through the process, we've gone through several meetings, several workshops to get to, to really get to the city council meeting tonight. What, what I think is important as you hear the presentation and as you look at the project is it, the project is consistent with the general plan. That was something that was very important to, to the city, to city staff, so that we would not have to go through any major changes to the land use. So we in fact kept the land uses as designated in the general plan. We made some, what I would call tweaks or minor moving around of pieces, but the overall acreage is extremely similar to what the general plan shows, which includes a, includes a elementary school and a park site, three different types of residential lots that we're proposing, and, and densities that are consistent with the general plan. So there's been a little bit of talk, and I'd like to be able to answer some questions later, but I want to go ahead and touch on this. There has been, obviously, you saw the discussion on the elementary school, and we have, have received a letter from the school district. Basically, continuing, wanting to continue these negotiations. We've had several phone calls and Zoom meetings with the elementary school district and would like to continue these, these good faith negotiations going forward after, after tonight as well. So with that, I would like to introduce Sarah Butler, who is going from Wood Rogers, who's going to present the land use plan and go over a little bit of the, the lotting. And then Jeff Carpenter, who's an engineer for Wood Rogers, who will go over the dry and wet utilities. Sarah?
Great, thanks, Bryce. Good evening, everyone. As Bryce said, my name is Sarah Butler, and I'm with Wood Rogers, and I am the project planner for Simmerhorn Ranch, and I'll be providing an overview of the development plan. Next slide, please. Simmerhorn Ranch is 119 and a half acre site, and as you can see from this location map, is currently within the Sacramento County limits and is bounded by Simmerhorn Road to the north, Marengo Road to the east, Bossow Road to the south, and the City of Galt city limits to the west. Next slide, please. To provide a bit of background, we wanted to touch on the existing conditions of the site. Historically, the site has been utilized for the farming of cattle crops and previously was utilized as a, or operated as a dairy farm. The site is quite flat, and as you can see on this aerial, has very little tree coverage and consists mostly of mixed grasslands. Next slide, please. So Cindy provided a great explanation of the overall notch annexation area. So I won't spend too much time on this slide, but I did want to note that the notch annexation, also known as the East Galt Infill Annexation, has been part of Galt's growth plan since the 1980s and actually was identified as a city priority in Galt's 2018-2019 strategic plan. Next slide, please. The Simmerhorn Ranch project applicant Elliot Holmes is proposing a tentative subdivision, tentative subdivision map, a general plan amendment, a rezone, a design review, and an annexation. Next slide, please. Here we see the tentative subdivision map for the small lot plan. And as I said earlier, the land plan contains 429 units as well as a park and school site and two water quality basins. As I discuss the land plan further, we will move on to the next slide, which is actually a color version of this plan. Here we can easily identify the location of the different lot sizes. The land plan was developed with three different lot sizes. 65 by 115s in the pale orange, 55 by 105s in the yellow, and I-court units, which are approximately 45 by 75 in the dark orange. You can also see the park and school site there in green and blue respectively. These lot sizes were carefully selected and laid out on the site, not only to offer different opportunities to homeownership, but also to realize what was envisioned in Galt's general plan as both Cindy and Price have mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. So now Elliot is not proposing any architecture at this time. So these are representative images only. But we thought it was very important to provide a few examples of I-court homes and to really illustrate what this portion of the project will look like once it's built. So I-cords are a type of cluster home product where several single-family homes share a common drive aisle. The term I-court comes from the way the homes look from a bird's eye view, where the drive, drive aisle looks like an uppercase I with six homes gaining access from it, as you can see in the plan view drawing on the left. I-cords are an increasingly popular product type for medium-density housing, as typically the homes that are directly adjacent to the residential street preserve a more traditional street scene by orienting the front doors to face the street. Then the second and third row of homes are oriented to and accessed from the common drive aisle or the I-court. This concept is illustrated by the street scene at the top of the slide, where you can see the front doors and porches of the first row of homes oriented towards the street. Lastly, the image on the right shows a real-world example of a recent, recently-built I-court home in the Sacramento area. Next slide, please. This slide demonstrates how I-cords look in a plan view, which is the top image, an aerial, which is the middle image, and from the street, which is the last image. The red dot and arrow on the first image is where the street view photo was taken and shows how these I-court homes will look like from the street. Next slide, please. So we'll transition back to discussing the land plan and, and how that, this land plan was established. The project was carefully designed in terms of connectivity. The project layout was designed to provide a safe and inviting vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian environment. Through discussions with the community development and public works departments, the connectivity of the plan was well thought out. And as you can see, there are buffered bike lanes, large landscape corridors, and separated sidewalks along Corillian, Marengo, and Street A. We also established bike lanes and separated sidewalks along Simmerhorn, Crystal, Bossow, and Street H, which is the street that borders the park and school sites. Next slide, please. I will now turn it over to our project engineer, Jeff Carpenter, to review the utility plans for the project.
Hey, good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jeff Carpenter. I am an employee at Wood Rogers and fortunate to be part of this exciting development. I wanted to first thank city staff, specifically Bill Forrest, for his assistance in sitting down and really working through the engineering solutions for this, this project. It's important to note that the drainage sewer and water infrastructure is consistent with the, the city master plans. In this particular slide depicts our sewer. The proposed development, the sewer is directed to the northwest corner to a interim sewer lift station and pumped west on Simmerhorn. This project also makes public water connections to Simmerhorn, Marengo, and Bossow on all three sides. Next slide, please. This would be the southern portion of Simmerhorn Ranch. What's illustrated here is water connections both to the east and to the south. Next slide, please. This northern portion of Simmerhorn Ranch depicts kind of midway through one of the detention basin water quality basins. Drainage for this development is directed south. Next slide, please. The southern portion of this ranch bounded by Bossow has the final detention water quality basin on the southwest corner. From there, it'll be discharged via gravity to the west, ultimately discharging into the city's existing drainage channel. Again, all the proposed improvements will be public, publicly owned, publicly maintained, and I am free for any questions as they arise. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Next slide, please. This slide Cindy had already shown, but it's included in our presentation as well. And as you can see, it's a comparison of the City of Galt's general plan and the proposed general plan designations for Simmerhorn Ranch. And although not in the exact same positioning as Galt's general plan, the same land use designations are represented. And that was very consciously done as this was, this plan came to fruition. We really want Simmerhorn Ranch to realize the vision that is established in the general plan by providing a variety of residential densities as well as providing the park and school site. Next slide, please. And we also included the rezone map for reference. But the project is currently still in Sacramento County, and it only has accounting zoning designation, as you can see on this exhibit. So this can be for reference to refer back to, but it's really just demonstrating the same concept that we are trying to complete the general plan vision that was established for City of Galt. Next slide, please. Finally, we have our preliminary landscape plan, which illustrates the street trees and planting plans for both roundabouts and entries, which are pretty important for the overall land plan as they will heavily contribute to the identity of the community as well as the overall sense of place of Simmerhorn Ranch. Next slide, please. In summary, Simmerhorn Ranch is 119 and a half acre site with 429 total units. There's a 10-acre school site, a 6 and 1/2-acre park site, two water quality basins, and there are large landscape corridors and a safe and inviting, inviting atmosphere for both cyclists and pedestrians. That concludes our presentation, and I will turn it back over to our moderator, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentations. I'd like to open it up for council questions if there are no more presentations. Craig, Mr. Hoffman, are we good to move forward?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So I'd like to open up to council questions in order to provide an equal opportunity for each council member to ask questions without everyone talking over one another. I'll call in the name of each council member. And if he or she would like to ask one or more questions, they can proceed. If there's an interest, I will call for a second round of questions. So I'll start with Councilmember Lamson. Do you have any, any questions at this point?
Just one on the, the homes, there was a picture of them with facing the street and then some with the driveways that go back. How, how big do those homes range from?
Those houses are going to probably be in the, boy, don't hold me to this, but probably in the 1,400 to 2,000 foot range. They're somewhat similar to our Veranda project that we're building over on, what is that, Corillian and Walnut?
That might be medium, medium-high density, so it might give us a little bit of help with that area that we need to cover.
Yeah, it's, it's, now it's being called what's called the missing middle everywhere. You know, these various, various jurisdictions, because it's a, it's a density and a housing type and really a market that kind of gets missed a lot in various places. So we're, we're excited to build it.
Thank you. That's about all I have so far.
Okay, Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I have a few questions. On the, first, on the zoning, the, the change in the zoning from the general plan to what we're doing now, I, I was, I was wondering, was there a reason why? Because I did some research today, and I was learning about what you just mentioned about they're calling it the missing metal. And I looked, missing metal, and I looked at a couple of plans in other cities and seen how they, and it seemed like they, what they would do is they would flow from their medium-high residential, like I-court type of housing, and then they would kind of go into a medium, and then they would go into the low. And it seemed like that's kind of the way it was laid out originally in the general plan specifying what was going to be where. But then the way you've rearranged it now, you kind of have, I don't know if you can just pull that slide up. It would be very helpful. It was the general plan zoning amendment. It has the colored, the orange and the yellow. Is that possible? Somebody will pull that up? No?
Give us just a moment where I think he's working on it.
Slide four. That's one. Yeah, thank you. So originally, it seemed like you had the, the, the MHDR, the medium-high-density residential on the far, the way we're looking at the screen far left, and then you had going, and then jumping over, you had the medium residential kind of flowing down into, ultimately to the bottom of the photo to the, to the low density. But the way you've rearranged it, you kind of now fractured, and you have the low density at the upper left and the low density at the lower right. So you, what you've now done is you, you put in the medium-high, the, the medium-high density, which is the most, you know, high density in this project, right next to the lowest on the left side. And so I'm just curious of why, why you thought that was better. I, I mean, I'm just curious because it doesn't seem like it has very good continuity. I just wondered if there was a reason for that.
I think I'd, I'd like to turn that over to Cindy. A lot of that did come out with several of the meetings that the neighbors were involved in. Some sensitive uses that took place, Cindy. I don't know if you could add more to that discussion.
I can touch on it.
Go ahead, Price.
Yeah. Councilmember Farmer, I think it's a really good question, first of all. And, you know, when you, when you lay, start laying out these plans, it, it went through several versions. And, you know, they're, they're kind of blobs to begin with anyway. You know, I mean, they're, as you can see those, those pictures, you start laying out streets. And, you know, we've always thought it's okay and, and to have, you know, density next to density. I mean, we're okay having low, low, lower density next to this medium and this middle. And so we didn't look at it as, you know, a negative to have, have these two next to each other. And as we also tried to, I'm just going to be candid with you, to have the park and the school where it ended up. There was some, some genuine reasons that we wanted the park and the school where it ended up. There were some discussions, frankly, I'll just be honest with you, with, with the, the seller of the property that we bought it from. And they wanted the, they wanted the opportunity to keep the park and school closer to that north, what is that, the northeast corner? So we started working kind of from that framework. And then we also ended up with the two, the two basins, which also kind of changed things a bit. And, you know, through, through various, kind of various iterations, it ended up this way. We think it's a really good land plan. We, we've still tried to keep, as you can tell, the, the, the middle density towards the, towards, closer towards the city center or closer towards the, the future commercial. And that's kind of genuinely, kind of generally how you do it. But, I mean, there was, there was a lot of iterations that, that ended up in the plan plan that you have before you. And, and we think it's a strong plan now. I mean, it, it took a few to get here. It went through a lot of revisions with, with city staff, and we think it's a good plan now.
I mean, I, looking at it, and I see that, you know, it, either, in either variation, the high risk, the high density is going to, I'm just going to call it high density, so I don't have to go through the whole middle-high, you know, acronym. But the high-density portion is budding up against the commercial in both, in both versions. So I, I mean, I, I think, you know, I don't really know how I feel about having that, but up against, maybe that's a positive. But I just know that there's been some comment in the community. People were kind of, you know, nervous about the high-density element of this. I'm sure, you know, remember from the planning commission. So I just think that, you know, zeroing in on those concerns was like, well, this high resident, this high density next to my house is going to, you know, somehow make my value, my property value less or less desirable or whatever. So I'm thinking when you're putting, you know, what's probably going to be the most expensive item or the, the higher, you know, the most desirable item in this project next to the lower. And I don't mean to use the word desirable because some people desire different things. But I mean, you know, you're taking, you know, the high product and the low product and putting them right next to each other. I'm just wondering if that doesn't create more of that, that problem. I, I don't, that was just my thought when I saw the arrangement as well.
I think honestly, contra, contrary, I think, I think having the higher value, and as you said, higher value, lower value next to each other creates, you know, diversity. I mean, you pile, I don't want to use the word piled, that's probably not right. But by putting all of it all over by itself, I think you might create more of what you're trying to avoid.
By mixing, by mixing it in instead of having.
Yeah.
This is the, this is the bad part of the neighborhood versus this, the good part. You kind of mix it in, kind of try to spread it around.
We'd like to say they're all good neighborhoods.
Well, I, for lack of a better term, you, that, I kind of get what you're saying. I, I get that.
And if I can add, Councilmember Farmer, what, what he's also done is put the low-density residential adjacent to the, the existing lower-density residential that already exists to try and match more what already exists in the neighborhood to the north.
You're referring to the, to the north of, of Simmerhorn Road?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. On the I-court. Okay, on the I Court houses, is there, has there any been a discussion, again, kind of going back to these comments? You know, I, I think that, you know, Elliot obviously has a great product. I mean, you guys have proven, proven your, your, your product is quality and I, and I think that. The concerns, I feel that some of the concerns after really thinking about them and really thinking, spending a lot of time on this. That some of the concerns with the I Court housing being, you know, an inferior product or being something that's going to somehow. You know, like I said, draw down values or something in that area or become, you know. You know, become a bad part of whatever. I think if the product is a good product, I think then, then you can't really compare opposite oranges. To, to maybe another instance that's taken place. But I also wanted to ask, is there any, is there any discussion or who controls whether or not there would be any type of. HOA or anything that controls, you know, again, focusing on that quality, living quality. Is there anything like that in this?
I don't believe, am I still on? I don't believe there's a condition of approval, council member Farmer that says that. But. I would tell you most likely that's going to have an HOA over it because of those. Those I Courts tend to be private streets or alleys. For example, Veranda has an HOA, the one we're doing at Corillian and Walnut.
Okay. So because of the, because of the community, well, not the community, but because of the common areas, sharing the driveways and things, it's usually.
Exactly, exactly. And we've done several of these in Folsom, Roseville, Rancho Cordova and they're, they're. They're very successful. It, it meets a niche in the market of young families. Retirees, teachers, I mean, those that, I mean, it's, it's still expensive to buy a home, unfortunately, even in Galt and. We have found it to be a really good product.
Okay, just one more question and then I'll let some go and I have comments I can save towards the end and I got, we got some public comments here too, so. I know it's a little early on, but I mean, the price point, again, going, tying, you know, going back into the same narrative here with this quality on the, on the, on the. I Court. I mean, what price point, I know that construction do all depends, but if this was constructed today. Where would you see the price point on these particular product in your development be at, do you think?
I knew you would ask this or somebody would, right? It's, it's always the question and, and again, please don't hold me to this.
I understand that.
But, but it would be, I would assume they'd be in the. Low three hundreds is where they would start. Something like that. I mean, we have a very similar product. I don't have the Verandas. We, I think they're, they're literally opening for sale like next week. But we have a very similar project in Rancho Cordova that starts at three thirty and I think this would be very similar to that. And it's probably, you know, a year and a half away from actually having houses. So something in that range.
Okay, okay. All right, I'll, that's, that's all I have for now. Vice Mayor, I'll, I'll. Save my further comments, questions for after. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Campion.
Yes, just a couple of questions. Price on the, with regard to the, the I Court product. Is there a reason that you would not do an HOA at this point on that? For purposes of maintaining those properties?
No.
Would you be opposed to a condition requiring an HOA?
No.
Okay. And Cindy, I think this maybe goes to you and, and I'm just trying to get a, an idea in your, in the slide presentation. You indicated that we had a service and I took it as a service cost of about two hundred thousand dollars per, I, I assume per year. To those areas outside of the city. Did I understand that correctly? Or, or two hundred thousand dollars of cost somewhere and I'm, I'm not sure where exactly that was and how that, how you arrived at that or what that, what's that composed of?
Well, I'm not sure if Claire is on, but she helped. Basically, the police department is the closest, so they respond first. So even though the police isn't the one responsible for filling out the reports and doing all of those kinds of things, they actually are the ones who show up first.
Okay.
So Claire helped come up with what she assumed the cost of providing services there.
Okay, okay. And so those are, go ahead.
So, thank you for the question. We derived those numbers directly from the property tax in that grouping. Of, of existing lots and those are being, anybody in those areas are being provided services. For the city of Galt.
Okay, okay. So that's. That increases the net revenue by obviously not having a cost, but we're in the city. With regard to the, the land use designations in the land use map that we were looking at. Speaking from past experience in the city. Those land uses are established or were established based on what housing needs were. Not necessarily based on the geographic layout or positioning of those land uses. It is, as you can see, even in the land use designation, there are areas that were, were omitted, which were the. Detention basins and detention basins, you know, ten years ago, eleven years ago, when this plan was put together, weren't. Weren't a fixture in new development and that is going to make a change in the land use and you have to make sure that that is accommodated. In an area which accommodates the, the drainage for, for the particular subdivision. So. I, I don't know that any general plan land use designation has ever been mapped identical to what the general plan set. What the objective there is to look at the overall collection by acreage and then make sure that even by rearranging it. That you achieve what was the intended purpose in terms of housing diversification, non-residential, commercial. As well as industrial development. So that, that kind of, I don't know if that, that helps explain it, but that was the reason for why it was done, at least in this case. That's all I have.
Okay, one of the consequences of going last, I suppose, is everybody asks all your questions. I did, thank you, thank you to my colleagues for, for asking those questions that many of them, which I had, obviously. I do have one or a couple of, of clarifying questions, actually one. When we talk about, and this may be for Craig or, or maybe even Cindy. When we talk about high density housing, this is a hundred and, a hundred and twenty acre project. When we talk about high density housing, what are we talking about in terms of? Parcels per unit or units per, units per acre, I guess is what it is.
The medium high density designation on this site. Is the general plan says eight to fourteen units per acre. The actual proposal that Price has laid out for the I Courts are at eight point eight units per acre. So. We almost had to tell him to add more. He's right on the edge of that high density designation and. It's an ownership product. Sometimes when you get more into that medium, high and high density designation, you have. A rental product and what you're getting here is something that's medium, high, but also providing an ownership opportunity.
Excellent. One other question as it relates to that, just so I have it in my, my head in terms of. Perspective, a typical apartment complex is how many units per acre?
You know, and, and it really depends the type of amenities that you're putting in it, how tall you're going. A lot of apartment complexes coming in. You know, if they're a mixture of, of studios, one bedroom, two bedroom, I don't know if they get up to three. I know some of the recent apartments we've seen are hitting somewhere around eighteen to maybe twenty-two. But it really is amenity driven. How much parking you, you provide? Does it include the pool? Is there a clubhouse? I think Cindy did touch on it. One of the nice things that we really are starting to see is the for sale product in the medium. In lower high density projects where before you were just really seeing apartments and it's nice. Is, is a more affordable option for first time home, but buyers are even maybe empty nesters move down housing.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that, I just wanted to get a perspective of that because that, I think, when, when you talk about. You know, acres of high density, I, I think it's important that. At least for me, in my mind, I'm kind of a little bit of a numbers guy. I, I have to, I have to see the difference and, and from what I'm gathering. Mr. Walker and Elliot Holmes is proposing about eight and a half units per acre, a little bit more and. What a garden variety apartment complex, which I think is high density. Is in the area of eighteen on the low end, depending on the size. So. So it's, 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 you know, certainly double. High density in my mind in terms of apartment complexes are, is double what's being proposed in this, in this plan. And again, I, I, I appreciate the clarification because I think it's important to understand the, the level of density and. And what's, what, what is out there, I, I guess. And so I, I would say this, my only, I, I just have a comment. Is it relates to the I Court Cluster Home concept. What are the things that I've noticed? And I've actually gone to the other communities that have. Maybe not exactly what's being proposed, but something similar where you have alleyways that lead to. You know, two or single car garages. And I think as somebody mentioned in terms of the homeowner association, private roadways, I think it was Mr. Walker, maybe. And having to maintain private roadways or alleyways, which would almost require a homeowner association. But I think the other piece that's missing here that we haven't discussed at all is in many of these. At least the ones that I looked at in two different communities. These I Homes also had a single source of landscape maintenance. And so when you talk about home value. At least in my mind, at layman's terms, you know, oftentimes you hear somebody say, you know, my neighbor doesn't keep their yard up very well. And, and some would say that, that would lower the value of, of your home, even if you do an excellent job. At keeping your, your lawns and, and, and landscape manicured appropriately. I don't know if this is going to be the case. Maybe this is something for Mr. Walker to answer, but. Is, is that going to be the case here or, or is that what's proposed? Is that there's one source of landscape maintenance that. The homeowners would pay into, to maintain that?
Mr. Vazano, we haven't, we haven't gotten to that level of detail, but along the lines of, of Mr. Campion's can. Question on the HOA, typically if we did an HOA, it would, it would include maintenance of lands, all landscaping, correct? And, and you're right, it goes a long way to, to keeping the values up, keeping the project looking good. I mean. Our names on it, we wanted to look good for a long time.
Okay, that's all I had. I, I appreciate. Sarah, Jeff, Cindy, Craig, everyone and Mr. Walker for your presentations. We're now going to open the public hearing and have public comment at this, at this time. Has the city clerk received any written public comments on this item?
Yes, I will start with Jay Vandenberg. The original general plan shows Corillian Boulevard extending the four lane road. From Foxhall Avenue to the A Street Overpass. Seeing that the Corillian Boulevard corridor plan was sent back for further review. The city council should not approve the Simmerhorn Ranch project until the Corillian Boulevard corridor plan has been resolved. As the two directly affect each other. The cost of the I Court's housing will not be affordable at three hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand a unit. They will be the first to become high cost rentals. They will be first to lose value in a down market and the last to gain value in a growing market. Cramming four hundred twenty-nine lots onto ninety-five acres that includes streets, sidewalks and open space. The four hundred twenty-nine lot will be the highest density project Galt has seen. Why is this type of housing suddenly being proposed when Galt is in financial difficulty? Why does Galt have a minimum lot size if they always change it to accommodate developers? The city council is here to look out for the city's benefit, not help developers make a higher profit margin. This is how we become El Grove, something that the vast majority of citizens do not want to see happen. Next is Randy from Galt Fitness Pro. The project appears to be amazing. We want to be sure to let all citizens. Have a chance to ask questions. It's a good plan, but how long and also what is the environmental concerns? It's a much larger project than normal. Can the council comment? The local homeowners in the area are not pleased and that's all I have.
I have a couple of people on the attendee side.
I was going to ask you, Rose, do we have any raised hands?
We do. So the first one will be Ty and Monica Beekman. Go ahead and unmute yourself if you, if you're not able to. There you go, you're up.
I think I may have done. Did it work?
Yeah, it worked. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Right, hey, uh, council members, thank you for this opportunity and for taking a look. This property in the notch back just before the year two thousand. So for twenty years, we've been anticipating. Something like this happening and wanted to thank Elliot and thank those in the city that. Worked with Elliot to bring this entire project forward instead of piecemealing a ton of property owners into the city limits. So thank you for that and for having kind of a big picture way of being at things. I do have a question. My wife and I are wondering, there's a bike path, purple, it says city planned bike path. We hadn't noticed that before. It's on the northwest edge of the property heading south towards the overpass toward the street. And. Heading all the way down to Boto and yet I don't believe there's a street currently planned as a part of this project for that. So I'm wondering if somebody could help us understand what that would look like. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Hoffman, is that something you can address or?
And I might need a little bit of help from Price or Sarah on this one. Is, is this the central way? Is this the, the street all the way to the, to the west that is being asked about? It will, it will be.
It's like an extension crystal. From Bosso Upper Horn and it's two purple dotted lines on the map that was shared.
Greg, this is Sarah Butler. I can, I can jump in if you would like.
Yes.
Please.
So this was an exhibit that we put together to show not only the planned bike. Bike lanes and buffered bike lanes for the Simmerhorn Ranch project, but also to show how they would connect to the overall city bicycle network. So this, oh, thank you for pulling up the slide. So if I believe you're, you're talking about the Crystal Way extension, that you are correct, it is not. It is not there yet. So this is simply on what is planned for the city and the city's general plan as well as a bike master plan. That there will be a proposed, there is a proposed bike lane there once the extension is complete.
Slide ten, right? So there's no street there, but it says. Go ahead.
Ms. Butler, as I understood the question and. Mr. Beekman, if, if, if I have it wrong, let me know. My, I think the question was, we have these bike lanes that are proposed on the map. And, and there are no roadway improvements to support those. That's how I understood it. Is, was that the question, Mr. Beekman?
That's, yeah, that's correct. Thank you.
See, I, I understand. This was simply to show the overall plan. Once everything is complete and the annexation is done. And these extensions do go through as in, in accordance with the general plan. This is how these bike lanes would connect. We wanted to show we weren't establishing on Crystal Way a bike lane that would just end at the end of our property. We wanted to illustrate that there is a plan. It is not, you know, in motion, but it is in the general plan that that proposed bike lane will be there.
Correct. We're just trying to show that we were consistent with the bike master plan. We could have, I guess, stopped those dotted lines. But we just showed them to give an example of where this will ultimately go. We don't own that property. But we just showed them to give an example of where this will ultimately go, we don't own that property.
I'm well aware of that, so that's why I was asking, I love the idea, was just curious, okay, thank you.
It was, that's a good question.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, do we have any other, uh?
We do, so I'll have, there we go, um, I'm going to go ahead and allow, next person in is. Jean Davenport, so I'm going to go ahead and let you, let you in, Jean.
Okay, I'm unmuted, okay, um, okay, thank you, um, about this, on this project itself, you know, I, I, I'm not delusional to think it's not going to go through, I think, uh, we're already past that stage. I just want to comment on some of the things that I believe this city is, is being, it, it's just not working. For the majority of the people in this town because the city council does not take the time to listen to us. I agree with what Kurt said about the general plan being a schematic for growth and to allow it to go forward and make with some, some incremental changes. To, to that plan, but it's to a point now where one hundred percent of the projects that come forward. The developer gets what they want and need, i.e. like you're going to put that high density in that corner. And the veranda right now, the home prices are starting at four hundred thousand, at least that's what the sign says. So you bring that back over into a, um, a lower income area, I believe they're going to be cheaper. And they have, you have the same project right now i- in, in Lowdy across from a casino and a liquor store. And they're, they're, they're low income housing rentals. Um, and, um, you're going to get the same thing here because acro- just across the street. The planning commission just okayed a change to a general plan of what that, the person that wanted to build the gas station on the corner there. They're now going to be allowed to sell alcohol, hard alcohol. So that in turn is going to develop how that community kind of grows. And I don't care what anybody says, that's going to happen. Um, it's statistically proven what you get when, when you put liquor stores in low income areas. And in this, you're ripe for, you, you're ripe for, for that to happen. I still don't agree with the way this new project is laid out. I honestly believe the high density should have gone to the far side of this development. Over towards the school area because it's going to supplement the kids going to school. And, you know, I understand what a homeowner wants, I, I remember on the planning commission. The, the, the people that own the dairy wanted certain things. And they were abundantly, they just were told no, and Kurt, you were a part of that process. And I remember you telling them, distinctly telling them, no, we can't go forward with some of your ideas. That being said, this project I know is going to get approved tonight by this council. But I just wish Elliot, you keep saying how you, you're really grateful for Galt and all that we've done for you. Why can't you look at this as Galt grows, because none of you guys are going to live here, we do. And I, this one, the thing that really irritates me the most is developers that say all these great things about it. And everybody that works for Galt, almost ninety percent of them don't live here. So at the end of the day, it's the people that live here that put up with what we're given. And I just think you guys need to take a breath and stop and look at this design. It's not right to put the high density housing where, where you have it, it's just unfair and, and it's not right. Thanks for your time.
Mr. Davenport. Or, Mr. Davenport, are you still there?
Yeah.
Hey, I have a quick question, I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, small lot, well, it's the vesting tentative map. And you suggested the medium high density housing go where?
To the far side of, of the development, over by where the school is, you have an, oh, oh, you have an open space.
Is that what you're talking about?
I would say to the south of the school, start on the corner of that lot and build it out. And take some of that medium density and put it back over next to the other medium density that you have on the north side. I mean, I'm looking out for the future of, of this city in the sense that they're going to be kids. Low income housing kids going to, to move into those houses. And that school's going to be within walking distance. And there, I know they said at the last meeting that it's going to be a safe. For, for all the kids to walk to school, but you can make it safer, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, and, and I, just for clarification, because I want to understand, where, where is the low income housing going? Because I don't know that.
It, you, you, I'm calling it low income, you call it high density, I'm calling it low income, so that's exactly what it's going to be.
The high.
That's what it's going to turn into, yeah, yeah.
Got it.
And you're putting, and you're putting them in a liquor store right across the street, right across the street, it's an invitation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport, uh, do we have anyone else with their hands raised?
We do, we have a couple more, so the next person up in is Addison Covert. Addison, you are up.
Uh, thank you, um, my name's Addison Covert, I've spoken with you all previously, thank you for this opportunity to address you again. On behalf of the, uh, Galt Elementary School District, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the city council. Um, I'm pleased to tell you that the district is very, uh, happy with the progress that is being made with the developers. That have been coming in front of you recently with respect to proposed projects. In fact, condition A sixteen that was mentioned earlier this evening, which is a part of this development project. Is one that is helping the school district continue to make, uh, positive progress in negotiating, uh, an additional. Source of revenue to ensure adequate funding for the school site, I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about that this evening. We spoke about this earlier in the context of the Fairway Oaks project and received your positive support at that point in time. And we continue to appreciate that, but I will mirror the comments that, uh, Price Walker made previously. Which is we're continuing to work with him and the representatives of him, his firm and his company. To, uh, successfully wrap up an agreement which we hope to have done a far in advance of recording of any future, uh, final maps. But thank you very much for your consideration this evening. I'm perfectly happy to answer any questions or respond to any comments you might have, but that's essentially it for my comments tonight, thank you.
Okay.
Alrighty, next person we have up is Sherry Daly. Sherry, you're on.
Good evening, uh, mayor council members, uh, welcome to City of Galt. Um, two items, the, the I Court homes still are an issue for me as a longtime resident of Galt. Uh, I think Elliot Holmes does a terrific job with their housing products. I think the Veranda project is shaping up to look really, really nice and I've seen it in person in two different areas they've built in Sacramento, they're lovely. But let's be serious, that's not what we're getting. The Veranda project is about four homes to the same space that would be six here. And I know that we're under pressure from the state to, um, increased densities, decreased prices, et cetera. But I don't think we're at a point where we need to go this far with this project, we have, um, this type of higher density housing going on. Behind Rite Aid and then again up on Walnut Avenue, we have a, a large influx of that coming very soon. So it seems like putting this in the middle of this part of town just doesn't make sense. It would make more sense to put one of those beautiful Veranda projects, the, the four rather than the, the six packs. Um, down in that corner and maybe have a little space for a dog run, so you could have your young couples who don't have children and have their pets that they need a place to roam. And then put a row of them as, um, Jean had mentioned, uh, by the school for, for families with young children. Because when you're looking at these homes, there's absolutely no yard. And there's very little place, once you put cars on those driveways and those are the only way, those little alleyways to get in the house, there's no place for the kids to play. So I just think this is too far, I think we can be more reasonable, I think, um, Elliot is very comfortable with the Veranda project. He said at the planning commission meeting, he hasn't even built these, these, um, I-type, um, developments before. So why don't we go with something that we like, that the, the builder's familiar with? That will provide some increase in density, but not to the level that is really inappropriate for this project. Um, just to close, um, I would second what Mr. Campion, uh, mentioned and what Mr. Farmer mentioned about an HOA. I think it's absolutely imperative that you have one and that it is very strong for either the I project or. A Veranda type project, both of those would need to have a very strong and well-funded, um, HOA to make sure that they are a good product going forward, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Ms.
And that, um, we have no more raised hands.
Okay, I just want to allow the public another opportunity to raise your hand, we'll give you a couple of seconds if you'd like to speak.
Vice Mayor Lozano, I got one more written comment in.
Okay, uh, Ms. Hubert, let's, let's, uh, go with that and then we'll get, that'll give opportunity for other members of the public to raise their hand on the Zoom.
Okay, I got one more comment in from Randy at Galt Fitness Pro.
She's just going to read it or try to.
Uh, the surrounding community is not happy with this plan, can the city or developers do an environment impact report? The land was on fire and full of compost as well as foods yearly. Please provide us with what the flooring and the removal of the dairy waste so to Galt, amen, Jim Dam, Jim Davenport. And that's all I have.
Okay.
And we have no more raised hands on the attendee side.
Okay. All right, uh, seeing that we have no more public comment, uh, through PubCom and we have no additional raised hands. Uh, we are going to, I'm going to now close the public hearing and bring this item back to council for further discussions and questions of staff. Again, council members, I'll call on you individually and we, uh, for your comments and questions. Uh, we'll start again with, uh, council member Lamson.
Uh, yeah, I, I've been with this project for a long time, um, it's, it's one of the goals is to get. The east and the west side differences evened out and this whole area coming down south will help with that. As they said, it'll make it easier pass through to, um, Old Town and the other side. Also, I was at that public meeting that was packed out with forty-five, um, concerned citizens that live in the area, um, off of Simmerhorn. And it was explained to them very well that they get to keep their cows, they get to keep their chickens. They don't have to hook into the sewer and water unless they need to eventually on down the line and, um, the road will be improved. As we all know, county roads, um, you can tell the difference between county roads and city roads. And so all those, um, discussions went forth and very comfortable with what's being put forth. And the planning commission also, um, tweaked it quite a bit. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, uh, council member Lamson, uh, council member Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, um. I would like to make comments, but I'm going to kind of break this into two pieces here, first I want to just talk about the annexation itself and. I mean, this, this annexation has been talked about, well, I think somebody mentioned the eighties, I mean, we're, you know. This has been something that's been needed and wanted for probably thirty or forty years. Um, this area is what should have been, you know, i- in my opinion. Uh, where, you know, our, some of our development that eventually went on the east side, like our Walmart and some others, should have happened here. This, this fracturing of our community into two pieces, um, the way everything kind of has, 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 uh, taken place. Um, where we just kind of skipped over this, this is a long time coming, th- this is a big, huge puzzle piece here and, and. I don't think, uh, anybody, even, uh, some of the people that commented, uh, Mr. Davenport and Ms. Daly who've been here a long time would, uh, are going to dispute this, I've actually had conversations with both of those people. And, um, and I, I know this, this annexation makes a lot of sense and, uh, we need this. Um, and, and with that comes development, um, you know, to get that annexation, we have to have the development. Um, you know, a lot of people, uh, you know, there's a lot of people out there that don't want development, I, if anybody knows me, they know I'm a conservative growth person. I, 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 I love Galt, it's a small town and I don't want to see huge development, I've been very, uh, supportive of these small infill projects up till now. This is, uh, obviously a bigger one, uh, but it is very much an infill project. And, um, speaking specifically about the, the general thing here about this, what's happening here is. You know, people have, have said, look, you know, we don't want, uh, you know, thousands more people here, but we want, you know, we like to have an In-N-Out Burger. Or we'd like to have a, uh, you know, a movie theater, all these things that people want to have more amenities for our community. I personally want to see better things, more things for the people that live here to have, not, not so much, um, concern about additional people. But, uh, I want, you know, uh, my family and, and your family, those of you are watching to have, um, the opportunity to have other things coming here. And for that to happen, this has to happen, this, this notch, this notch has, this development that comes with this notch. Is, is imperative to get those, those, to attract those, those commercial developments, they're going to come in on that freeway right there, this is a stepping stone to that. Um, so, um, so with that said, uh, you know, that's regarding the, the annexation and, um, I, I'm, I'm happy to finally see that coming. And I'm very supportive of that, on the second piece of this, you know, we have the, the development and, and, and clearly we've all seen, um, from the planning commission till now, we've seen. Uh, the pushback of, um, the various opinions of, of the, the housing. Um, we all know that California mandates certain types of housing, um, I'm aware that there is other projects that are, um, that are creating some higher density housing in, in Galt. Um, but what I want to remind people too is, um, you know, I do listen to people, I very much listen to people's comments and I think I've proven that. I listen to the public quite a bit and I actually have been talking to a lot of people lately and, and kind of trying to get, just be very open minded about this and, and, and kind of see. Where people's minds are at and, you know, I have two daughters that are in their twenties, um, they pay just exorbitant rent right now. I mean, they, they, they just couldn't buy a house in this town, there's nothing, um, that fits what they want. Now, these are, these are, you know, young people starting out in the world, they don't have kids, they, they want a place they can afford. Um, you know, and I think, um, to, to be frank, um, unfortunately, I, I disagree with a couple of comments, I, I actually disagree with Mr. Vandenberg. Um, where I think that, uh, that we just cannot continue forward with only trying to build affluent neighborhoods. And, you know, the, 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 the low density that most of Galt has, we have to start looking at different products, um. This, this is not a high density product, it, a lot of people look at it as high density, yeah, it's high density compared to what I live in and what most of us live in. But, uh, but it's a product that fills a certain niche and there's a lot of young adults, I mean, I would love for, you know, I want my kids to stay in Galt if they chose to do that. And I think a lot of families, uh, love this town and would like to see their kids stay here as well. And for that to happen, we have to have a product for them to live in. Um, you know, I don't agree with the, with the, with the comment of low income, I think low income, you know, i- is, is a broad term, you know, you could talk about section eight and other types of things. But I, I don't think a house, I, I genuinely think these I Courts are probably going to be like in the high three hundreds by the time it, by the time they're, they're built. Um, you know, unless we have a housing crash or something, but that's, uh, that's going to allow people like my daughters, for example, to, um, get into something affordable if they want to. Or like somebody mentioned about, uh, you know, empty nesters looking to downsides where they don't want a yard. You know, li- look, I like a yard, I like having grass to mow, I like having a backyard, but there's people that just don't, some people just don't want that. And so I, I'm trying to be open minded and listen to, you know, a lot of people, I've said that they don't like this product. I've listened to a lot of people that said they do like the product because they have kids that are, that are growing up and they want to be able to have something to go to. I think, um, I, I think it's a great product, uh, I, I, you know, I'm not saying it's perfect. Um, and we can sit here and nitpick it all day and talk about, you know, the arrangement of where it can be. And I brought up my concerns about the arrangement of it, but to be honest with you, I'm not really an engineer and expert about exactly where I think the housing should be placed. And I understand that with the open basins and things, there's reasons why it kind of came into the way it's been designed. But, um, I think, but I, but I do share concerns with it turning into something that, that people don't want, I, I, I get that, I, I totally agree with that. I would like to, to see a condition added like Mr. Campion, uh, asked about, um, with an HOA in there. I think, um, that's a good compromise, I think that that would, uh, would make some people happy who have some concerns about, um, the product being, uh, you know, the area being kept up. And the landscaping and, 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 and it turning into something that, you know, that people don't want to see. I think if we did something like that, I think it would be a, uh, you know, an olive branch to those people. So, um, I know I probably made some people mad with my comments, but look, I listen to people, I do. But I'm not always going to agree with everybody, but I am agreeing with a lot of people I've spoke to and unfortunately I, uh, you know, this is my feeling on it, I, I, I. I would like to support it if we get an HOA in there, I think that's a good compromise, I'd like to hear what my other council members have to say about maybe adding that condition. So that's what I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, council member Farmer, uh, councilman Campion.
Uh, thank you, um, a couple of things. Um, and I heard some things, you know, from the public that were completely inaccurate and I, and I think for purposes of clarification, it needs to be said. Mr. Vanderburg said that, you know, we changed the zoning or the minimum lot size, well, we did not do that. As a matter of fact, the general plan designations are exactly the same and the zoning, which is consistent with those general plan land use designations are. And the zoning, which is consistent with those general plan land use designations are what the property is being zoned. So whatever that lot minimum is, it's consistent with the general plan. And that general plan has been that way since at least two thousand and nine. So to make that statement is completely inaccurate. Secondly, to, to assume that this is a high density project is also inaccurate. In that, if you actually look at the acreages, and this is a gross density, you've got a gross density of almost over ninety-six hundred square feet per unit. Now, that's a gross density and I don't have the numbers to figure out what the average would be otherwise. But that's clearly not even close to high density. That would fall in the range of the lowest density we have, which is R1B or R1A, which is a minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet. Sean, you lived on an eight thousand square foot lot, just like me. And the R1A is ten thousand square feet. So it is clearly not a, a, a low, low density or high density project. The other thing that I think is important is that you can't simply look at these land use designations such as the, the medium high density. The city has to comply with the state, the Department of Housing in making land uses available for varying levels of incomes. Doesn't mean you have to build any type of specific project. But when you have these land use designations, if you change or reduce the medium high here, it means you've got to look somewhere else in the town and rezone property that was some other lower density to a higher density. So it, it, it's a balancing act throughout the community and it's a state mandate and failure to comply. Well, I'll let the city attorney respond to that. But there are no good things that come out of failing to comply with your housing laws. And I do think that including an HOA would be extremely beneficial. One, I, I, I think it, it, it would assist in maintaining those properties, both their exterior as well as landscaping. And I think that that should be added as a condition of approval. Lastly, and this has been said, this project, I think will benefit the community in a number of ways. You know, connectivity to the northeast area, not only transportation and, and pedestrian and, and others. But physically, we, we have a connection. There are still other areas that I think could be, can be worked on. I think that it, it, it provides an opportunity for those people that had reservations that, that are planning development now. Some assurances that the city's not going to make them do changes immediately or connect to, to city services has been stated. And I simply find the project to be consistent with the general plan, consistent with the utilities plans, the master utility plans. And, and I like it. Lastly, and this is more of a question because I don't know. And I'd like to ask Mr. Walker a question, if that's okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, with regard as a comparison in terms of density between the Veranda project and this project. I, I simply don't know what the difference in densities are. So if you would allow, I'd like to have Mr. Mr. Walker respond to that, if that's possible.
I, I can do that. Coming from the, coming out of the planning commission, we were asked that, that question. So we did, we did run the numbers and the Veranda, as we're building it, is actually higher density than the I-Court project.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Campion. Mr. Walker, I'm, I'm thrown for a little bit of a loop here. Only because you say that Veranda seems to be a higher density than what is being proposed in the I-Courts. Is that because, and, and I guess again, excuse my ignorance, I see six units per bundle as opposed to four. And that doesn't quite, in my mind, I guess, compute. So if you can help us with that a little bit?
Sure, I actually probably will turn that over to, to Sarah. She ran, she ran the numbers. But basically, you'll see that the lot sizes in the I-Courts are actually larger, slightly larger than the lot sizes in the Veranda.
Okay, okay.
Yes, Price, this is Sarah Butler. That is accurate. So in the Veranda product, the, actually, the average size is much smaller than the average size of forty-five by seventy-five that are these I-Court units. So where you're seeing four versus six, the area which the six pack goes over is much larger than the area of the four pack.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it. I, I have a couple of comments, no, no other questions really. First, I want to thank staff and, and the presenters tonight for presenting a, a, a quality, have any quality presentation. But also, I, I happen to watch the planning commission meeting when this was heard by the planning commission. And, and, and there, there were some, there were some, some differences and some questions that in our presentation tonight that were answered from the planning commission. Many surrounding the I, the I, I Court concept. So I appreciate that. First, I want to apologize. Mr. Hoffman was not formally introduced and, and many in the public and, and may, may have some question about who he is and what he's doing here. Who is that masked man? Mr. Hoffman, I totally apologize for the public's interest in, in certainly everyone else, city staff that hasn't met Mr. Hoffman. He's our interim public, I'm, I'm sorry, interim community development director, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so how many days on the job?
Twelve.
So I, I just want to point that out. There were a couple of times where you appeared to be very stumped. And, and again, I should have caught on to that and I didn't. So I apologize for that and we welcome you and thank you for your, your service to the city. And, and thank you for stepping in tonight and, and taking this one on, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I just have a couple of comments. You know, when, when, when I think of Galt and I, and I lived in a city that, that, that exploded with development beyond control, where traffic was an issue and still is an issue. Housing developments were not developed, developed in a, in a, in a manner in which I suited my, my need for where a place I wanted to live. You know, and the list goes on. And I say, and I, and I say that because that's why I moved to Galt. Is, you know, I get home from work and I don't have to worry about traffic getting, getting into town other than once I get off highway, once I'm on to highway ninety-nine, it's a little bit of a challenge, but we're fixing that as well. But certainly when we get into the, into the city and city limits in the sphere of the city or county partners, I don't worry about traffic, I don't worry about crime like I, like I did in, in another community. And so, you know, I, I'm not an advocate necessarily of any, any particular builder. But I will say this, since this has been an issue, actually since the Veranda project was introduced, I, it piqued my interest. And I, like Councilmember Farmer, have children that are of age that would really, really like to buy a house in Galt. But, but it's not affordable for them. So we, I really took a lot of time and, and visited actual sites where these types of homes were being built. And I, and I found that they were really, I mean, nothing that I would want to live in necessarily. Because I, I like my yard as well. But, but certainly for, for some people that, that really suits a need. And, and so, and I think LA builds a great product. And so I, I would agree that homeowners association would be probably a good, a good thing to have in, in terms of a condition of approval. Mr. Walker set, states that, that he would have no problem with that. And I think that would be a good step forward in, in doing what we can to ensure the value of the properties in that particular area. As it relates to the annexation, you know, it has been on the books for a long time. And, and for those of you that have driven down, and I'll just use Simmerhorn as an example, that's in the county, you find that the roadway is, is really, really rough. And as soon as you turn on to name the street that's in the city, you know, up, up Marengo a little bit and it, it smoothes out. You can definitely tell the difference between the roadways that are maintained in the, in the county and those in the city. And I think this is the, this infill project will really do a lot for the community as a whole. And certainly allow the flexibility of our current residents that are county residents now that will be annexed in potentially to, still enjoy the, the, the county lifestyle that they have until they significantly develop their property. And so I, I think that's important. As it relates to business and, and attracting business. You know, I've, I've said for a long time that it's not only houses that bring in business. It's not only, you know, roadways, new roadways, it is a combination of everything. And we have a great commercial highway property that is just to the west of this property. And I wouldn't suggest anything be, anything specifically be developed there, but it's been there for a long time. And I think Councilmember Farmer mentioned, you know, that, that would have probably been a great place for a Walmart at one point. And, and so I think it's a great place for something, something that the city wants there. And I think that this project, not only the annexation, but the development really will spur some interest in that, that property. And I think if it's done right, we can get something there that our residents can use. Because I do hear the same things, you know, people want other amenities here in town. There is a segment of our community that would just as soon rather drive, drive to the south or the north of us to another city to have those amenities there and want to keep Galt the way it is. And so there is a balance. But I think that the annexation and the development will at least pique the interest and provide our economic development manager, Amy Mendez, an opportunity for another shot at something that our community could use here in this, in, on that, that commercial property there. And I only bring that piece up, I mean, there are many others within the annexed area that I think that we could look at and say, you know, at some point, something would happen there. But I think that's just the one, the highway commercial is really the obvious to me. But, but again, not tied to anything, but I certainly think that that, that balance of commercial business and residential is what's going to drive the economy, not necessarily one by themselves. I kind of look at it as a three-legged stool. So I appreciate the, the opportunity to hear this. Again, I appreciate the changes that have been made since, in the questions answered from planning commission to now. I still would argue that three hundred thousand or three hundred fifty thousand dollars and we're not going to hold anybody to that number. But if you just think about that number for a second, I don't believe that that is low income housing. That's certainly not affordable to a lot of people who have careers and permanent jobs. So still, it is a different opportunity for housing in the community. And, and I think it's good for our, for our city. So that's all I have, I appreciate everyone's input tonight. And I appreciate the public for either dialing in or, or emailing in and, and providing us that input back. And then, and, and I also want to say just one last thing, you know, we, we also receive, you know, text messages and emails and telephone calls from people in the public. And, and, and I appreciate that, that input as well. So having said that, and if there are no other council comments, we, we, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Farmer, go ahead.
All right, not to, not to prolong this anymore.
No problem.
One last, just thing, one last thought here too. You know, to bring a housing element into a unit like this where it's part of a larger new project where nobody lives currently, and, and I'm not referring to people who live across, I, I have family that live across Simmerhorn Road there. And I know a lot of people that live down Crowley in Little Ways. But I honestly don't think that this housing element, this, 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 this higher density housing element is going to affect people's houses that live down Crowley and currently like, like, you know, like our mayor and you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And, but I, I would rather be supporting this element here than supporting this element in the middle of an existing neighborhood. I mean, I can understand how somebody would be really upset, they don't want, you know, like the Veranda project, for example. I mean, I wasn't here when that got approved and I'm not going to knock on the Veranda project, I'm sure it's going to be a great project. But that to me is something where I could understand the outcry against that, you know, being next door to existing lower density. But in this case here, you know, people just don't like the higher density element in this new bigger, you know, four hundred twenty-nine unit development. I mean, maybe it's not for you, maybe it's not for me, you know, maybe I don't want a house in there. But there was people that I think will. And I, and I think again, just to kind of double down on what I said earlier, I think, I think that's why I support it here. And, and, and I'd rather support it here than somewhere else, in my opinion. So thank you for the extra time there.
No, no problem, I, I want to offer that same opportunity up to the other council members, should you have any other comment? No, Councilmember Campion, any other? Okay, okay, we are going to entertain a motion. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt resolution approving the initial study mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the East Galt Infill Annexation, Simmerhorn Ranch Project.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Lamson.
I would like to make an alternate motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Maybe this isn't the right, maybe, maybe, maybe I'm, this isn't the right spot. So excuse me if I'm not, but I wanted to see the condition added regarding the HOA. So I don't know if that's on a, on a, on a separate item that we're voting.
Yeah, I planned on adding that to the number seven, which is the vesting tentative map.
All right, thank you, thank you, all right.
Yeah, that's the last one we're, we're going to be thinking. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. We, we have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
I apologize, I did that backwards with Mayor not here.
Okay, we, the motion passes four to zero. The second action that we will be looking at is entertaining a motion to adopt the resolution approving the annexation of the three hundred and thirty-eight acres.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Lamson. Roll, will now call for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye. The motion passes four to zero. Number three, will now entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving the amendments to the city's circulation element and land use map of the general plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Campion, a second by Councilmember Lamson, will, I will now call for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye, the motion passes four to zero. Now entertain a motion to introduce by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance approving the proposed pre-zoning of the three hundred and thirty-eight acre East Galt Infill Annexation area to R1C, R2, R3 dash PD, PQ and OS. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Looking for a second.
Tom, did you second that? I'll, I'll second if you don't.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Lamson, and call for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Motion passes with a four, zero vote. And action number five is entertaining a motion to adopt the resolution approving the large lot vesting tentative map and the small lot tentative map subdivision, I'm sorry, small lot tentative subdivision map for the Simmerhorn Ranch site.
Second.
Can we remember Campion?
I'd motion to amend of the motion to include the requirement that a homeowners association be required as a condition of approval addressing exterior, whatever the standard, I think we have a standard condition to that. Addressing exterior, whatever the standard, I think we have a standard condition to that, but it would be the exteriors of the building as well as landscaped areas, common, common landscaped areas.
Okay, we have a motion by council member Campion. Mr. Hoffman, do you have a comment?
Yeah, let me add some language. You would be adding a new condition. It would be a seventeen. To this, to the conditions. And there is a condition that was prepared for the Veranda project, and it would be similar to that. And let me read it to you. The applicant is required to form a homeowners association for the I Street. Project site. The applicant shall prepare a declaration of covenants, conditions and restrictions. And submit them to the city attorney, community development director and city engineer for review and approval. The CCNR shall include a clause prohibiting the amendment, revision or deletion of any sections. Of the CCNRs without prior written consent of the city. The applicant must have the approved CCNRs recorded with the county of Sacramento's. Recorder's office concurrent with the final map said HOA must ensure long-term maintenance and operation of all community and common property.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I meant to say.
And now that we have a motion, I, I just have a question of clarification. And I don't know that I heard it. In the, in the map, it talk, there's a street that I think we're referring to, and it's, I think says circle D or O. I can't really tell. Is that limited to that area? Where the I Court homes would be?
Yes, that would be the intent. That's a good point. That is a good point, though.
Okay. Councilmember Farmer, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify that. We're, we're amending this to pertain only to the I Court section of the development. Is that correct?
Yes.
And for clarification for the minutes, is it the wording exactly? Referencing what Craig read to mirror the other condition?
I think that's fine. It'd be consistent then with the conditions prior.
Excellent. Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by council member Campion, second by member Farmer. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye, and the motion passes four to zero. I appreciate, appreciate everyone's time tonight on this item. Including our presenters and certainly the city staff for, for all that you've done. Tonight on this. We are going to move to the regular calendar, but may I ask city manager Heinz to. Contact Mayor Sandu and let him know that we are moving on from that item.
Yes.
Thank you. Nothing like dead air.
The mayor will be on shortly.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Heinz, to your second day on the job and first official council meeting.
Thank you, thank you. It's, it's, it's been, it's been fun so far, very educational. Good to get to know Galt and good to know the staff. So it's, I'm looking forward to a very prosperous future here.
Yeah, as I mentioned to you earlier today, we have a, we have a great staff and.
Yes.
And, and, and folks will bring you along just as fast as you want to. So.
Right.
Yeah, they're awesome.
Yes, they are.
Sandu, I, Mr. Sandu, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Next item is regular calendar. City manager's office, subject proposed community facility district. This item, Mr. Heinz, or you can assign somebody.
Yes, Lorenzo Heinz, city manager. The city attorney's office will be speaking on this particular item, and I will turn it over to them.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just will be giving a brief introduction to your finance team here, but before I hand it over. Just wanted to briefly note that the item before you this evening is the first step in creation of a proposed community facilities district or CFD for the Liberty Ranch project. Which was approved by the city in twenty sixteen. The project, as we, as some of you may know, is about approximately five hundred and four acres, and it involves residential, commercial parks, open space. And so with that project, the council also approved the development agreement. And as part of the development agreement, that it required the formation of a CFD or CFDs. To pay for some of the special infrastructure improvements as well as the ongoing maintenance and services. So. The infrastructure is, is paid for with the issuance of bonds, and then it's levied, and there's a special tax levied on the properties. And similarly, the ongoing services is a special tax levied on the properties. Which you heard about not too long ago with the formation of the CFD for maintenance twenty twenty dash one. So this is a similar. CFD, but with the added element of the infrastructure. So. With that, I will go ahead and hand it over to your finance team who can explain in a lot more detail. And you have Eric Scriven with NHA Advisors on the line, as well as Kim Byrons of Best Bestin Krieger, who I will hand it over to now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I think you covered some of this already, Kimberly. We have a five or six-page, very high-level PowerPoint that. Just walks you through, summarizes, if you will. What is in your staff report. And I think on the page that we get into the detail, if you will, for the items that are being. Considered by council this evening, I'll hand it over to Kim Byrons. She drafted all the documentation. And can get into the weeds as deep as you would like, and then we'll talk about timeline at the end. We always like to, is there a PowerPoint that's going to be put up? Or should I just, it's very brief. It's like five pages, but. I don't know if that was part of the plan.
We'll get the PowerPoint right up.
Very good. One page. Please. We always like to establish the objectives. We identified three. There are many, many more. We'll put a little background to this. I think Kimberly, your city attorney has noted some of those items. There are two resolutions for council consideration this evening. The resolution of intention informed the CFD twenty twenty dash two Liberty Ranch. And the resolution necessity to incur bonded indebtedness. We'll, we'll just briefly go over the timeline. And there's a page that goes into a little bit more of the detail that surrounds this. This is really the beginning. There's been a lot of work done to get to this point, but this is the beginning for council to. Put in place this CFD if it so chooses. I think we can turn the page. The objectives, just very high level again. I think it was the policy of the city. To if, if there was going to be a establishment of a CFD that. Public services, including the fire district services costs would be a priority. Within this CFD to create a funding source for public services. Additionally, this, an objective is to facilitate public financing, i.e. bonds. For funding of public facilities within the boundaries of the Liberty, Liberty Ranch development. And third, and always we should remember that part of this process is to be mindful that we're. We want to ensure that future homeowners are not overburdened with excessive property tax. Turn the page. As Kimberly had mentioned previously, the development agreement with the developers was approved in twenty sixteen. The area was, the Eastview area was annexed in twenty seventeen. As part of the, it was contemplated in the development agreement that there would be a C, a community facilities district, CFD. And the developer has requested that formation occur. With the intent to have bond financing. And if you look in your packet, you will notice there's two special taxes. The facilities tax that goes to the bond financing of public improvements is special tax A. And then part of this process and the city was very diligent throughout the process is that. During this formation of the CFD. Analysis was done to ensure that all financial impacts on the city with respect to service levels. And future maintenance of public facilities would be covered, and that is special tax B. You would see that in the rate and method of apportionment document within your packet. Turn the page. This, I might just hand this to Kim Byrons, who's with Best Bestin Krieger. This is the heart of the matter this evening, and we highlighted in red what precisely you'll be considering tonight. Kim?
Hi, thank you, Eric and Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, there are two actions to be taken. And primarily what they do is establish the outside parameters of this district being the boundaries. The taxes to be levied, and they call a hearing. So the first is the raise, resolution declaring the intention to establish the proposed community facilities district. It establishes the boundaries. It has the rate and method of apportionment of the special tax. And. Just to note, there are two improvement areas in this. CFD improvement area one, and improvement area two, and each improvement area has. A special tax A and a special tax B. The A tax, as Eric mentioned, is for the facilities. And the B tax is for the services. Additionally, the resolution of intention. Is approving a funding, construction and acquisition agreement. And that agreement sets out the terms. For the issuance of bonds to fund the construction and acquisition. Of the new public facilities. And it sets out a list of the public facilities to be financed. And the manner in which the contractor for the public facilities will be paid. From proceeds of the bonds or special taxes that are available to pay for those facilities. The second resolution is the resolution declaring necessity to incur bonded indebtedness. And it also calls a hearing as well. And that hearing is scheduled to be held on October sixth. At your meeting, and we will be taking action to. Properly notice the hearing, but at that time, what we will also probably be doing is conducting. The landowner election. As there are no registered voters in the boundaries of the. Two improvement areas of the CFD. The voter is the landowner. And because. It's just one voter, we can waive time restrictions on elections, and we will conduct. The election on the night of October sixth, in addition to the hearing. Is there any more on the next slide? Oh, and just for your information, the improvement areas, the resolution of a necessity. Establishes the not to exceed bonded indebtedness indebtedness that could be. Issued for this CFD and improvement area number one, it's about sixty-seven million dollars. We don't expect to need that much, but. It's available. The timeline, as is shown on the page, is that. This, the city's established goals and policies many years ago. Those goals and policies work very well for this. CFD. Today, we are adopting the resolution of intention to form the CFD and the resolution of necessity. They call a hearing for October sixth, where we will conduct. At that time, a public hearing and the landowner vote. And after that, the CFD will be formed. And then at some future point, we will come to the council for bond authorization. Next slide. Wow, don't look. I'm going to confess, I had some internet issues with my. iPad, and I switched the meeting to my iPhone, so I can't see what that says. But it's going to be basically a flow chart, I think, of what we just covered. One of, one of the things that we will ask, I'll just throw this in for this formation process in detail. Is we will ask for waivers from the landowners. There's generally speaking, timing requirements for elections, you know, you call an election and then. Ninety days later is the election. But we will provide documents to the landowners and also to the city clerk's office. Requesting their consent. To conduct the, the landowner election on October sixth as well. And then after that's done, we will have a formed district. Well, there'll, there'll be a couple little actions after. The hearing to adopt a resolution of a formation of the district. And then a resolution calling the election, and then after the election is held, we'll confirm the election results. And, and the thing is done. So. That flow chart, I hope I covered what you wanted in that flow chart. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer anything.
We, we wanted to include the flow chart for councils, just. Looking over, sometimes these actions are taken in a vacuum. And as you can see, the highlight, the blue box is really what you're doing this evening. But there are future actions, and there's a little bit of detail for your, you know, for your review. As if you approve this evening, these would be the steps that would be happening. With that public hearing themed at October sixth date, that it would all come to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I will let. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for give us the presentation. I know the staff and all other people working this project for a long time. I have a couple of questions, then I going to turn over to the other councilman. My first question is, I believe a couple of months ago, we did approve CFD. Twenty twenty-one, and this is a CFD twenty twenty-two. What's the difference with these two? 2021 and this is a CFD 2022. What's the difference with these two?
I'll answer that. So CFD 2020 dash one was on a separate piece of property and it was for services only. That CFD does not have the power to issue bonds. CFD 2020 dash two is on the Liberty Ranch project. It's a completely separate property and it has completely separate powers. We are trying to accomplish the same thing with CFD 2020 dash two that we did in 2020 dash one with the special taxes that are sufficient to pay for the services that are going to be impacted by the development as well.
Thank you. Then my next question is, you said we're gonna have on October 6th, there can be a public hearing. And that public hearing then and then also there can be election. Could you explain a little bit detail? How many owners on that CFD and how can be worked his election?
Unmuted, yes, of course. So the public hearing is a public hearing that is open to any member of the general public in the city of Goul. They're available to speak on the project. It's general notice. At the close of the public hearing, if it is a council's desire, you can adopt the resolution forming the district and also call the election for that same night. Because there is only a single landowner and there are no registered voters on that property. We can request the landowner and 100% of the landowners in the district must consent. Together with the consent of the city clerk to act as the election official. We can conduct the election that night. We anticipate that that will be the case, so we will have prepared prior to the hearing date ballots and other ballot information for the landowner and the waivers for them to deliver to the council on the night of October 6th. So that would all be available to you. And I think this was also done in the same fashion for CFD 2020 dash one, which was for the services district or for the services taxes.
So that's why I would like to give the information to the public. So that day, if we do the election, there can be only one vote and that can be the owner of the project.
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you. And now now I would like to turn over to my Vice Mayor, Lizanne.
Thank you, Mayor Sandeep. I appreciate it. Just on that note, there was some confusion. Ms. Byrnes, in the last time we did this, as mentioned before, there were people in the in the public that believed that it was going to be a public election of the registered voters of the city. And so thank you for that clarification. It is only the property owners. On that note, the only effect, and again, this is for more for the public, but the only taxed people that are going to be taxed under this community facilities district and services district are the ones that have not purchased property here yet. Is that is that correct?
Well, the only property that will be taxed is the property that will be within the boundaries of the community facilities district and each improvement area. There is a tax for undeveloped property. So if we were to, for many different reasons, proceed with the issuance of bonds early on, there is the possibility for the developer to be required to pay some of the debt service or special taxes for debt service as well as future homeowners.
Okay, okay. And I guess my
It's it's just the people within the boundaries and and it could be the developer and it will more than likely be homeowners.
Okay. And and this is the the area of the 504 acres that's east of Marengo that we're that we're we're speaking of. So it's not I guess my point is, is that current property owners outside of that area are not going to be taxed. It's just that that particular area.
Correct.
Okay, I appreciate it. And I think that's all I have. The rest, I think the mayor covered pretty well. Appreciate it and thank you for taking the time to come out tonight and and provide the presentation.
Councilmember Campion.
Thank you, thank you. I I need to apologize because I did have some questions and I wasn't able to to make those ask those questions as I've been sick for the last couple of days. But in in reviewing some of the documents, I do have some questions and maybe it's just clarification that I need. And I went through, I was looking at the definitions portion and I I don't understand them. I want to get a clarification on, it talks about under that, under developed property, it talks about exclusive of provisional property. And then it goes on to say, excuse me. I had the impression, well, let me just ask the question straight up. I believe there's a homeowners association associated with a portion of this project. Is that correct?
That would be a good question for Chris.
Well.
I believe so. I think that's been discussed.
Because I'm trying to figure out on the homeowners association, I thought I read in here somewhere that that was exempt, but I can't tell if it's exempt property from the special tax A or the special tax B. Which is the question?
If you'll I'll 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 look this up.
Okay.
But my guess is that it probably is excluded from the special tax A. Because the homes are going to be paying for those improvements. And the homeowners association is an additional cost to the homeowners for maintenance within the association. And then the special tax B is going to be for all the public improvements and the homeowners association may or may not be taxable based on the need.
I would really like to be able to find, and I can't, I thought I found it in here, but I did not make a because my my question becomes then is and maybe this is a question for Public Works, are any of the public facilities within the boundaries of the HOA? Those they would have to be maintained by the homeowners association. But I think of other public facilities such as pump stations, lift stations that benefit the HOA, but they're not paying a special tax for for those improvements. I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how that works, if in fact that is the case, but I and I haven't been able to tell. But I thought I read that the
I don't know. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I think that it would be one of policies if there is pump stations that are public improvements, then I don't see them as something. You can look at it this way. If a homeowner is paying a special tax on for facilities and for services. And the homeowners association is on top of that for those association properties and association responsibilities. If you charge the homeowners association, you can you can lower the tax on an individual residence and charge the association that amount, that difference. Or you can just charge the homeowner and not charge the association.
Okay, I think I understand what you're saying, but I and I found what I was looking for because you looked at definition of developed property makes reference to provisional property. And provisional property is parcels within the boundaries of the CFD owned in fee by a property owner association, including any master or sub-association. I guess my question is, and I I'm not, I'm not sure that I agree with that, is that that you don't charge the homeowners association and you let the balance of the residents in the CFD, which are outside the association, fund all of the public improvements when in fact the association does benefit from some of those public facilities. I would have a concern with that.
How does the associate, how do you residents that are in the association are in the CFD but are not in the association?
If 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 you're in the association, I and again, I don't know what the rules are for this association, but I would assume that at the boundary points, you're going to have connections for water, sewer, storm drain. Everything on the association side would be their responsibility, correct? Streets.
But isn't these, I'm sorry, but isn't every homeowner subject to the association?
That's my question. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what association we're talking about here.
Yeah, I don't know that there even is an association because we have the services.
Well, but it makes reference to a home, a property owner association. So I I I don't know, and I don't recall. I I believe that at a time they talked about doing a homeowners association on a portion of it, but I don't know. I I don't know what they what they finally did going through the process.
Yeah, I would be surprised if there was not was a house that was in the CFD that was also not required to be in the association. So that's what your concern is.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out then is when you look maybe I'm confused because when I look at the at the special tax table and it talks about the way I read this is under special tax A. You show a tax on units 2100 square feet larger, but if they're in an association, they're exempt from that tax under a under assigned, under special tax, under special tax A, but they would not be under special tax B, which is for services. I I think I need clarification as to whether we have an association and what's what it consists of.
Yeah, we can confirm that, Kurt. My recollection from Chris was that there was or there is an association. However, there were some original amenities anticipated for that association that were removed. So while some amenities were removed, it's my understanding that there still will be an association.
And that's for the entire, I guess, all lots covered under under the, yes.
That's my, yeah, that's my recollection, but we probably need to get that confirmed, so.
I, sir, I I just received a text from the the development team also watching. And he he said that it needs to be made clear that there is no HOA.
There's no homeowners association in the entire subdivision? Or the entire development?
Public improvements would not be maintained by an HOA, even if we had one. It was clear part of the services special tax, tax B was to maintain installed public facilities, as you call Mr. Selling. That was one of one of the metrics that was going into each one of these the calculations for the special tax B was sort of this linear feat of streets and other park improvements, those kinds of things would be part of the special tax fee. So that might be, I don't know if that's carryover language from in the rate and method of apportionment, but if Mr. Selling is that towards the middle and end of these discussions with the developer, I know that, you know, Mr. Arias was leading that, but I'm I'm not, I'm getting a clear conversation from the developer that there's no association.
Yeah, yeah, I was not involved in it. Like I said, some time ago, my recollection was that there was an HOA and there were some amenities were removed, but if that changed and essentially there is no HOA now, then yeah, that's that's newer information than I had, so.
I believe the conversation about the HOA had to do with the original development agreement and was removed later in the discussions.
Well, then shouldn't the, well, these documents should reflect what is current then. I mean, and if there is no HOA, then there should be no reference to HOA and exemption as provisional properties. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. But I I would like to get clarification on that at a minimum before I feel comfortable moving, you know, moving forward on discussing that and several other parts that I and there are more questions than anything else, but I I'm not I'm not at a level where I'm I'm satisfied with that answer, I guess. That's just me.
I I would, I would, I would echo his motion to or his notion of what are you saying? It seems like it's maybe just some generic language that's being used, but but it kind of does. And my question is, again, I wasn't, I know Kurt was around then, but I wasn't around when you guys approved the Liberty Ranch development, but I'm assuming you guys approved like subdivision maps and all that or it was not, none of that approved.
Yes, subdivision maps were approved, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so there's no chance that like what we did tonight where we actually, you know, amended asking for an HOA for a certain that's not something that could have come into play later on in Liberty Ranch?
I'm not following you, Sean.
Like what we did tonight with the with the Simmerhorn Ranch, how we we, you know, we added you know, in the process of approval, we added a condition for an HOA. That's not something that could come up later with Liberty Ranch because we're past that point, right?
Well, I my point is, yeah, it could happen. It could happen. My point is, I still think there's an obligation, even though you're in an HOA, you have benefited and maybe maybe this has been worked out and it's just not clear in these documents. But if you've, if the if you are receiving water or or from a well or from an oversized line or you're utilizing a detention basin that everyone else is paying for, you know, through the CFD under the capital side, then there should be, I think, a proportionate share by even if you're in an HOA, because you benefit from those those improvements. I mean, I I don't, I think that's the, that's typically how costs are assigned. Now, it may be less in an HOA based on, you know, whatever formula is used, but I think that there are I think there's a methodology that can be looked at to to make sure that it is fair and proportionate and that those outside of an HOA are not footing the entire bill. That's my whole point.
Yeah, I I agree with that. I agree with that. Yeah, I, I agree with that. I agree with that. I was just, my concern was. That if we talk about clarifying this language and, and they, you know, we'd say we get clarification, said, no, there's no HOA in this, so we don't want to worry about that language, you know, coming into play, but then. Why I asked you if there's a chance that later on in Liberty Ranch, you know, starts to, you know, move forward. If there's ever a chance that there could be an HOA introduced at any point, then, then we just muddy the waters again. So that's, that's, that's my only two cents about it.
Yeah, on this project, I just don't recall. I don't recall what, what, what was finally approved. I, and I, I did have some other questions. And it had, again, to do with definitions which did not make a whole lot of sense to me. And maybe someone can explain it to me. When you look at the definition of, of. On page C three. They define high density residential development means all parcels within the residential property with the building purchase been issued. For the purpose of constructing a building or buildings comprised. Of attached residential units available for rental by the general public, not for sale to an end user under common management. I, I. I, I look at that and I think, you know, duplex, I think would fall under that definition. Because it could be owned by a management company or, or a, a single individual. But it is essentially a, an attached single family. And, and my question is, why wouldn't we use something associated with zoning or something more, more precise? Then, then that's really just a question.
We. We do not have a Will Dan representative on the call right now to sort of walk through the definitions. This is, the document you're looking at is the rate and method of apportionment, which is one of the key attachments, of course. These definitions all feed into how that document is applied.
Okay. Well. I, I, I mean, I.
Councilmember Champion.
Yes.
I have a suggestion. Let's move forward, take everybody's suggestion. At the end of the day, if we don't feel comfortable, then. Have more information given in future from the staff.
Okay.
Kim. For these documents and, and these concerns. That council is bringing up, does it, are there, is there any. Ability to create wriggle room on the definitions and such, or is it cut and dried? Kim Byron.
Well, I think, you know, we don't have expectation of property association. Property owners association, we could simply take that definition out if you want. As far as high density. You know, I think that definition actually works in the context of when you pull a building permit. You know whether the property is intended to be an apartment building or not. So you can, that definition probably works just fine. But if there is no intent to have a property owners association. It's something that the council can direct to remove from the definitions in the rate and method of apportionment. Or we can make property owners association subject to, you know, a tax. A certain rate. From my perspective, but I'm not a financial advisor, I'm just a lawyer. You know, if you have a development like this and you have a hundred percent of your. Home subject to special tax A, special tax B. And a hundred percent of those homes subject to an association. How you allocate the tax to an association is just going to have an inverse effect. On the homeowner's special tax, one way or the another. So they're all paying for it one way. Either through the special tax, but if you add the homeowners association, then they're paying it. Two ways, but they're paying probably about the same amount. But certainly we can make amendments to anything at this point in time. On the special tax or the resolution. The question would be if the development team had any objection to any of those, we would need to know.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I had a question. As to why the high density residential property is not subject to the special tax under A.
I believe it is.
And I may be incorrect, but I thought, looking at the.
So if you look at the special tax formula, there is the.
I'm just looking at your table one in the rate and methodology.
It's on the, I'm having a really difficult time. Tax zone one, special tax B. It's special tax B and then there is. It keeps flipping on me.
I think council member speaking of special tax A, which is the facilities tax. There's no assigned tax for the high density. There is an assigned special tax B, which is the services.
Yes.
Tax, which.
Oh, there it is.
Quite frankly, that's what we have focused on throughout this discussion with the, the developer. Is making sure that all of these units pay sufficient amount of services tax, the special tax B. I think there was some thought process behind assigning a zero to the high density. For facilities, you know, that you could bond against. And that's a, that is a more conservative posture on this special tax formula, not allowing for. Any special taxes to be applied to these higher density properties. That you can bond against.
Well, okay, okay. Well, and, and again, I, I look at it from a matter of equity. And, and I don't know what the land uses. I don't know. I don't recall what the land use is out there, land use composition. I'm sure that's all been calculated in here. So I don't even know how much, how many acres were, and I, I assume it's an acre or dirt per, per unit basis that the calculation is made, but. By low, by having it lower on the, on the higher density, obviously. You have a, you would end up with a higher rate on your residential, your single family. I mean, that's just.
I agree.
My mathematics, so. I, I would like to know how many acres we have of, of what the definition. Would fit under high density. Because it is unclear to me, you know, what, what that acreage really is, or what it would be. Anyway, I'll let someone else talk.
All right, councilmember Lenson.
Sorry, I hit the spacebar and the camera went off. That's not supposed to work that way. We were having trouble with Zoom at school today, too. The only thing I really wanted to clarify and talk to Lorenzo about this, they're calling it Liberty Ranch. But this has also been referred to as Eastview, correct?
Yes.
But just so the, the public knows, this is what is behind the development behind Liberty Ranch High School. So they don't, I tend to think high school when I hear Liberty Ranch, so I just wanted to clarify that, that's all. And thank you for getting this done so we don't get in the same position that we were in with lighting and landscape, correct? Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Farmer.
I don't have any comments. I already voiced my, but I, I, like I said, I do agree with Kurt. If, if, if. I mean, clearly Kurt is probably the most knowledgeable, well, I'll just say he's more knowledgeable than I am on this matter, being from his planning background. If he has concerns about this, then, then I have concerns. So if we need to find out more information before we. Make a decision, then I would be in favor of that. So I'm just kind of going along with what the council as a whole thinks here.
All right, any other council member before I go into open the public comment? You know, there's a public comment, written public comment.
No public comments at this time.
There were anybody on a Zoom. Have near.
I currently have no hands raised.
All right, now I'm going to close the public comment, bringing back that agenda item to the council. The second round voicemail is on.
Yeah, I, again, I, I know a little bit about CFDs and, and things. But I certainly did not pick up on what councilmember Champion did in reading the staff report. I, I, to understand his concerns and, and I would certainly look for my colleagues to. Provide some direction on what, how we want to handle this moving forward. I guess my question is, is if we choose to bring this back at the next council meeting where we can have the appropriate. Contractor staff or whoever that needs to be here to answer those questions. Is that going to cause a problem for us in terms of timing? And is this something that we can address? Before the election that is, that is scheduled. So I would ask, that, that, I guess that's my question and, and, and then, like I said, I would look to my colleagues to see what, what we want to do with this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And same thing, my concern is if we prove tonight and there is way because there is before the public hearing. Can we get from the start all the answer if we need to take action or not? Or we have to take a action tonight in order to clarification.
You. You can take action and approve with certain clarifications to be addressed at the hearing if you'd like. This just calls a hearing and the final approval is at that time. And so we can take. We can make amendments to the special tax so long as it doesn't increase the special tax. And address all these questions. At the hearing.
Councilmember Champion, you can make some kind of motion or suggestions who we will be. Skilled if we need to change whatever your concern is before the.
I, and, and I, I appreciate that, Kim. My, I guess my question is, long, same lines as Rich, I mean, what is. Do we lose anything or we, do we mess up the schedule if we were to say continue this meeting to the next regular meeting? In order to get clarification on some of these questions.
I believe we lose them. Or close to it because we have a thirty days. October sixth. Is more than thirty days from today's date. If we went to September. What would that date be? It would be. October twentieth, so no, we would just slip two weeks.
Well, I, I, I personally would feel more comfortable if we could take a little time now, they continue the meeting. Just to get, you know, to, to get those answers. I, I, I think they're important and I'm sure that, you know, they can be easily. Answered, but I don't think we have the information here before tonight, at least for me. I mean, that's, that's where I'm at.
Councilmember Champion, maybe I could make one suggestion, which would be, you know, the, the resolution of intention is what sets the public hearing and that's the thirty day piece of it that causes us the most. Delay, so you could just simply adopt the resolution of intent and defer ruling, defer approval of the, the funding agreement. And also the resolution on the bonded indebtedness and just do the resolution intent, which sets the public hearing. So, you know, we can either set. Questions on the fifteenth and the sixth.
Excuse me, we would have to vote, do both resolutions, the necessity and the resolution of intent. They both called the hearing. And the hearing is combined.
Oh, sorry. So, yeah, those just at the here, the agreement we can hold, right?
Yeah, and I don't know that the questions are not on the agreement that. The council has, they are in the ROI, they're in the rate and method of apportionment.
Right.
So. My recommendation would be in order to keep the schedule would be to provide your comments. In connection with the resolution of intention and the special tax to be addressed at the public hearing. Call the public hearing and we can provide that. Information to you. Prior to the hearing and also at the hearing. And if there are further questions, we can continue the hearings.
I would concur, Kim, I, I, we are certain that the special tax A and the special tax B that you have in the rate and method of apportionment. Before you will not be going up. So these are clarifications, critically important clarifications. On HOA and things of that nature and understanding the thinking behind them and the potential financial impacts, if any. With, with the language that's in there, as well as your, your thought on the high density, Mr. Champion. We can get all of that information to you as soon as possible.
Okay. I, I, and so when would, when would it be back to us? When would be the, the next, next hearing?
October sixth.
Okay, so that, that is the thirty days that you're talking about. It has to have at least thirty days. Okay, and then, so then in the intervening time, that information would be made available. I don't, I don't want to wait till. The agenda packet to get the information.
Is best.
No, absolutely not. I think we could get that information to you right away.
Okay, then, then I, I'm, I'm okay, I guess, moving forward, you know, if we're, we still have questions, we still have questions and, and so I, I guess I would be satisfied with that. Please.
Any other council member, any other question on this agenda item? And if nobody have no question, I have one question. Can you, somebody explain to me the bond mechanism? On this project?
I'm sorry?
A bond mechanism, we, we're going to bond like an eighty three million, something. Can you, somebody explain?
The boss. That may happen, will happen. Did he say, did, did the mayor say bond?
Yes.
Okay, very well. The bond mechanism is. What we call a special tax revenue bond that would be issued in the future. And the security for such a bond issue would be the special tax A. That is part of the, part of this approval, the special tax A is the facilities tax, that would be the security. It would be paid by the property owners paying special tax A. And that would go to pay debt service on, on the special tax bonds in the future. And you'd have to underwrite those bonds so that. And you'd have to underwrite those bonds so that you had sufficient special tax A to make, make those debt payments. And there's all types of criteria that the city has in fact approved previously in its CFD goals and policies to make sure that those are credit worthy transactions. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
And if I may add, the bonds when they are issued are issued through the approval by the city acting as the legislative body of the CFD. And they represent special limited obligations of the district of this community facilities district. They are not payable from any other source of revenue than the special tax. And they do not count on the city's funds and accounts other than the special taxes.
Thank you. Any other council member, anybody have any question?
I did, I did, Mr. Mayor. And if, just to get all of my questions out, I was reviewing my notes. Question, is there funded interest as part of the bond proceeds for this project?
There, there may be in the future. If when bonds are issued, it does matter when, what time of the year those bonds are issued, to the extent that you've issued them and you won't be collecting taxes which are collected at the same time as property taxes in December and April. To the extent that you don't have special, special tax collections that sync up with your first bond payments, first debt service payments, you would have to pre-fund interest. There may be other reasons why you would pre-fund perhaps more for, you know, for cash flow or for, you know, for the developer or trying to raise special taxes, you know, some building permits are going to be pulled and you're going to have additional properties paying special taxes. But the answer to your question is yes, that can be part of proceeds.
But, but so as part of the, I guess, overall funding program, the way it is now, is funded interest planned or not planned for bonded indebtedness to do any of the capital facilities or whatever? I guess that's my question.
The, we, we haven't seen a full funding plan, sort of a sequencing of the bond issues. What we have done though, as you'll see in the acquisition and funding agreement that Best, Best and Krieger drafted, is that we have a cap on the not to exceed bond par amount that can be issued for bonds for the developers. So if they want to fund interest or fund hard costs for reimbursements or construction, those will be, you know, limited up to the cap.
The, the, the second question would be, are fees included as part of the bond issuance? Or bond proceeds to, to reimburse for fees?
That actually, Kim, that, that schedule is, what is it? Exhibit A?
Yeah.
In the acquisition and funding agreement that's attached, I'm trying to remember.
Because exhibit A talks about fees. Capital fees.
Yeah, if you, if you look at exhibit B to the, the funding and acquisition agreement, I believe that, and you know what? It's on, it's on, in the documents, I'm not going to look for it right now, for two sort of categories of facilities that are described. There's the city construction facilities, there's acquisition facilities. And the city construction facilities, I believe, are the facilities that represent fees.
Okay.
Let me.
Clarification.
Just find that for you.
Exhibit A, it's page 77 in the packet or the item.
What page is that?
For this agenda item, it's page 77 of 90.
Well, I don't have it on, you must have it online. I've got paper copies. So I'm lost.
Okay. So there are city construction facilities listed, those in the amount of $55 million. Those are what would be your capital improvement fees or your development impact fees. They have to be spent on, you know,
They'd have to be consistent.
They have to be spent on real facilities. The owner managed public facilities are what this agreement really focuses on. And those are $76 million plus of facilities between the two improvement areas.
We get.
So the total amount of bond expected. Pardon?
No, go ahead, go ahead and finish.
Excuse me, please go.
No, I was just going to say, can we get copy?
The total amount. I'm sorry, you cut out of what?
I'm sorry. You go ahead and finish. I'll ask my question at the end. I'm sorry.
The total anticipated amount, I believe, to be issued by the developer is around $85 million.
Eighty seven. That's the math.
Eighty seven million dollars. So the, and the primary thing to be financed are these owner managed public facilities, which are $76 million. And when you include all the other things that will be, you know, these reserves, et cetera, there's not going to be room for a lot of the city construction facilities to be included. So I apologize, please.
Councilmember, that's, that's only A1. You know, the exhibit A, you have the same copy I have it.
I'm not sure I'm under what section of the document it is. I have a couple of different A1s.
Exhibit A description of public facilities.
It's on page 77 of the agenda materials. It's the exhibit to the funding and acquisition agreement.
But it doesn't get, it lists all of the facilities, but doesn't give the cost breakdown like you just gave us, correct?
No, it, I believe it does. It's the exhibit A to the funding and acquisition agreement that I'm looking at from your agenda materials. On page 77 of the agenda materials has a cost breakdown of the owner managed facilities and the city construction facilities.
Okay, I, okay, I did not, I just.
Four page last to the four.
I got it. I found that. I apologize. Let's see that. I think, I think that about does it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member, any other question on this agenda item? If he's not, then I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the resolution declaring intention to establish proposed community facility district number 2022 Liberty Ranch of City of God to designate to improvement area. There in an authorizing execution of funding, construction and acquisition agreement with Liberty Ranch LLC. Number two, adopt the resolution declaring necessary ranch to incur a bonded indebtedness of proposed community facility district number 2022 Liberty Ranch of the City of God for improvement area number one and two therein.
I moved.
Motion moved by council member Lamson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by council member Farmer. Tina may have a roll call board, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
You're in a mute.
You're muted, Kurt.
Well, that's why you didn't hear me. I apologize. By doing so, we will then have the, we'll have the information that we discussed earlier made available to us. And if, if, if we wanted to make changes, what, what, what would happen if changes were to be made at the October 6th meeting? What, what would that, what would that mean?
Well, I think what we would try to do is address these questions prior to that meeting.
Okay.
And we would provide a red line to the council prior to the agenda deadline, just to make sure that we've gotten your comments squared away.
Okay.
And then that we would just present that red line change at the hearing and then the resolution of formation would be with the changes.
We haven't harmed ourselves unless we were going to increase the special taxes. That's the litmus test, correct, Kim? Otherwise, we've got this flexibility to do it.
Correct.
All right, Tina, could you finish that roll call?
Uh, councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Uh, councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes at 520. Thank you. Then next end item is communication. Tina, any communication?
None at this time.
All right, any city clerks report?
No.
Next is comment by staff. Interim Community Development Director, Mr. Hoffman.
Mayor, if, if I may jump into the fray here. I wanted to lead off this particular section of the, of the agenda, if that's okay with you.
Well, thank you, sir.
Okay. So I wanted to, first of all, I wanted you all to notice the backgrounds that we have in this Zoom meeting. You'll notice it's a little different than the backgrounds we've had before. And so I wanted to thank the, as I like, as I've dubbed them, the, the unofficial Gulf, Gulf design team. I wanted to thank Amy Mendez, our Economic Development Manager, Tina Hubert, our city clerk, and Rose Ruttacker, our administrative assistants for their work in getting these great backgrounds for you all. And it looks very consistent and it's a beautiful sight. And so I'm very, very happy to see that. So I hope you, I hope you like the new design. I have some somber news to share with the council and the public watching. We have new COVID-19 statistics. I'll start with the county statistics. In August, countywide, we had 16,331 cases. In September, that has grown to 18,052 cases. That's a, that's a 1,700 case increase or an 11% increase over one month. The number of deaths countywide has from August to September grown from 246 to 293, 47, an increase of 47 deaths and 19% increase. Within our city, City of Galt, in August, we had cases of 500, we had 521 cases. That caseload has grown to 551 in September, an increase of 30 cases or 6%. The number of deaths here in the city in August was six. And the number of deaths in the city in September remains at six. So the crisis surrounding this pandemic still is alive and well. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood where we were statistically. On Monday, the governor released a, an amended public health order or Sack County released a, an amended public health order on Monday, based on the new tiered system announced by Governor Newsom on Friday, August 25th. There are now four tiers of COVID, various shelter in place activities. And the tiers range from a purple tier, which is the lowest and most restrictive up to a gold tier or a yellow tier, which gives us less restriction. Currently Sacramento County has a new daily caseload of 12 cases per 100,000 and a positivity rate of 8.1%. As a result, Sack County, which includes Galt, is in the purple area, which, which provides the most restrictive shelter in place activities. In order for us to move, us as a county, to move to tier two, which is the red tier, we'd have to bring our average daily case count to less than seven cases per 100,000 and have a positivity rate of less than 8%. So we'll keep watching the county status, but I wanted to make the council aware that there is a new sort of way of quantifying the various shelter in place activities that the counties are currently under. The other thing I wanted to mention was the governor signed a bill also on August 31st. And under this new legislation, which, which goes into effect immediately, tenants who pay at least 25% of their rent from September 1st through January 31st will be protected from eviction. However, those who fail to meet those requirements, those minimum rent payments could be removed beginning February 1st. And so the governor has taken action to extend the eviction moratorium. So I wanted to, again, make sure that you were aware of these things that were affecting our city as a result of this pandemic. And and now I'm going to ask the staff if they had any comments. And yes, we will start with Craig Hoffman, who is our interim Community Development Director. And Craig has done a great job in his 12 days here. And so given my two days here, him and I have a little support group of the new guys. So Craig, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
You know, I don't have anything for the council other than to say I'm excited to be here. I grew up in the area, went to Fairside Elementary School and Galt Middle School and graduated from Galt High back in 1993. I don't want to date Kurt, but I was, I was Galt's first planning intern. They had to actually create the position, I think, at the council. And you know, this city has a long history, a proud tradition, you know, between Kurt and Sandy and Chris. And I just want you to know all, all how much I take this seriously and I'll give you my best effort. And I'm very excited to be here. Thank you so much.
Very good. And welcome, Craig. We're, we're happy to have you on board. Let's go with our city clerk, Tina. Any, any, any further comments?
No updates. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go with Stephanie in HR.
Uh, no updates this evening, but I also wanted to welcome Craig. He's been with us, I think, a few weeks now. So welcome, Craig.
All right. And next up are Armando Parks and Rec.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure everybody knew that this is the last week the pool will be open. We'll be closing for the season on Monday, September seventh. And you can get COVID testing at our Parks and Rec office every Thursday from eight to noon.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Finance with Claire.
Thank you. I have nothing further to report.
Okay, great. Uh, next up, Amy, Economic Development.
Good evening. I, um, want to welcome Lorenzo. Thanks for the great idea on the new Galt background. I think they all look really nice. And Craig as well. Congratulations on the approval for the annexation of the notch area. That's great for me in terms of economic development. I think that's going to be an awesome addition for the Simmerhorn Ranch project as it relates to the forty-five acre commercial development. So that'll be my first phone call tomorrow is to let them know that that is coming online. So I appreciate that. But no, I have no further update. That's, thank you.
Okay, great. Let's go with Chief Sockman, uh, Galt PD.
So I don't have any updates for the police department, but, uh, hey Craig, I've been here for one thousand six hundred and twenty-five days, so it goes quick. Google's a wonderful thing. It didn't, all I had to do is type it in, so.
Good, very good. All right. Uh, next up, Mike Selling from Public Works.
Uh, thank you and welcome Lorenzo and, and Craig as well. Great to be working with you both. Uh, just maybe a quick update. Back in mid-June, uh, the council approved a resolution allowing for us to work with SECOG staff to develop hopefully a, a friendlier, at least for public agencies, methodology to distribution of the transportation dollars that come to the region. And been coordinating with Vice Mayor Lozano. There was a, a lot of discourse at the, the recent SECOG meeting, and I think we were able to, you know, achieve some successes there. And we've modified a proposal that we're awaiting a response from SECOG staff to try to hopefully, uh, you know, make some additional gains. And in time for the September SECOG meetings coming up in about two weeks. So, uh, we're, we're hopeful that, that that tool will be successful as well. So, thank you.
Very good. And I'll be reaching out to some of the folks at SECOG as well, so I'll, I'll look forward to that. Uh, City Attorney Kimberly Hood.
Uh, yes, so I will try the camera. I haven't quite mastered this whole background yet, but I've been trying. So, uh, as the city manager, welcome Mr. Heinz. He mentioned AB three zero eighty, which addressed the eviction protections. And we're going to be seeing a lot of activity out of the Capitol over the next week or two weeks, most likely with the end of the legislative session. So we'll probably be reporting on additional bills, but that is one, the, the governor jumped right on that one. So we will keep you posted.
Very good, very good. And Rose, anything?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, city manager. The next agenda item is comments by city council, Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yes, I, I, I always promised this, it never, it doesn't always happen, but I will try to be brief. I, I do appreciate staff's work with SECOG on funding round proposals and, and such. And, um, you know, they've worked diligently and it, it, it really was a, an issue at the, uh, the last SECOG meeting where, you know, it was pretty divided. And, and we certainly want to continue to work with SECOG as a regional partner. But, but I do appreciate, uh, Mr. Selling and his staff and him working with other local agency staff related to this issue. And we will get, we will come out of this at the other end and it'll be, you know, we'll, we'll get it worked out. But certainly appreciate Mike and your, your leadership in the Public Work Director Group to be a part of this. So, uh, so that's that. The other thing, I, I, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but maybe Chief Sockman can speak to it. I understand that there were some, um, uh, assembly bills and maybe a bit of Senate bill just recently that were maybe voted on yesterday that could have been defeated. And it had to do with law enforcement officers and their ability to have some civil protections, protections against civil suits related to their, their job performance. And, and there was another bill that really, that was related to the release of officers use of force complaints, even those that were unsubstantiated. And so my understanding is that yesterday they voted on some of those. And do you have an update on that? I understand one of them, civil liability, one may have been defeated appropriately. But I wasn't quite sure how the other shook out.
Seven thirty-one did not go forward. Uh, the other one that you're referring to, I don't know the number off my head, off the top of my head, but, uh, I'm not quite sure where that one stood. The seven thirty-one did not pass. And that's the one that would have, um, removed qualified immunity and, and, uh, and, uh, the, uh, the qualified immunity and the other piece would have been the board that would have had the ability to decertify officers.
Right. I appreciate that, Chief Sockman. I apologize for putting you on the spot. We haven't talked about this yet, but we did exchange some email. I, I think it's important for our community who, for, you know, all intents and purposes, is very supportive of law enforcement. And, and, you know, we're in a critical time now where we need to do what we can to help support the, the law enforcement officers and in the profession. And so, um, you know, moving forward, I think it's important to keep our eyes on those things, just like, you know, the presentation tonight, uh, that's important stuff. And, and in a, in our community, it appreciates our, our officers. So, um, so thank you for that. And I will leave it at that. I hope everybody has a relaxing and, uh, fun Labor Day weekend. And, uh, and we will come back in a couple of weeks. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Campion.
Just to say, uh, welcome Lorenzo, Craig. You know, to talk to you for several months now, at least Lorenzo, and glad to see you finally here. Craig, known you for a long time and glad to see you in a full circle, in a sense. So that's great. Look forward to working with both of you.
Councilmember Lamson.
Yeah, well, welcome Lorenzo. Um, you did, did you tell me you would only go till eight or did you say nine? Can't remember. Anyway. You tried. Uh, but Craig, welcome. Someone, someone was telling me what a great catch you are and, um, what a great job you're gonna do. And look, in just twelve days, you passed Simmerhorn that we've been trying to do for years. It's just amazing. So we appreciate all your guys' work and it was a good meeting tonight. I think we got a lot accomplished. Thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, just, uh, just want to say again, thanks to Lorenzo, um, uh, for coming on board and, and I had a meeting with him today. Uh, was it today or was it yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Yeah. So, uh, and, and so, yeah, just a great meeting. I'm happy to have him here. Meeting with him regularly and, uh, and, um, yeah. And then for Craig, actually, we haven't met yet. Um, I didn't know you were actually a Galt High alumni. I, we were actually in high school at the same time, although unfortunately you weren't part of the best class that came out of that era, but sorry about that.
Oh, nine rules.
I got people texting me saying ninety-three rocks and all this, but that's just. Yeah, but I, I apologize. I'm trying to place you, but I know we both probably look, you know, uh, much older. And so I, I don't know. But, um, last thing I want to say is to, uh, just want to wish my daughter, who's actually sitting here in the room with me, a happy eighteenth birthday tomorrow. And that shows you how old I am. The youngest daughter. So, and I got eyeglasses now because my, my eyesight's going. It's all happening at one time. So that's all I have to say tonight.
All right, tell her happy birthday, Sean. Okay, the last, uh, first of all, I would like to thank you all the staff doing, working hard during this pandemic. I really appreciate all the staff, all the department. And I also like to congratulate and welcome Mr. Heinz and also Mr. Hoffman. And they both came to the team. And I believe you are a great asset to the city and to the community. And I'm, you know, happy to looking forward, working with you, both of you. And then lastly, I would like also thank you for the community members who came to give us a public comment. And thank you for the community. And last, lastly, I also like to remind everybody be COVID nineteen, be social testing, that's the important part of the keeping social distance, whatever we can keep. And if anybody have any question, if he's not, then I'm going to adjourn that meeting. Have a good night. Have you safe, everybody. Thank you.